Okay, uh, we are having a hearing at six thirty. Uh, Greg, yeah, let me just start with the introduction. You all know me, I'm the Solicitor, Greg Vashovic. This is a hearing that's required in connection with borrowing the council's going to consider later tonight at the seven o'clock meeting. This is a more narrow issue and I'm going to have someone else explain in detail. But the reason I'm standing up and talking to you all is because we have to make a transcription. There's a court stenographer here, takes down every word that's said, so we can't talk at the same time. If you want to speak and ask questions, you're free to. You need to stand up, give us your name, make sure she can hear, and your address. And you can ask questions and we'll have a question-answer session back and forth, okay? So, I'd ask for your courtesy in that regard. So, anyone that speaks has to give your name on the record. This time I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ditka, and you can take it from here.
All right, you understand?
Please.
Yes. That kind of term is...
Maybe start a silence maybe, or your... No, your back's not there, but except for that group over there.
Can you hear me? Because you're important. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Ditka, I'm in from the law firm of Dinshorne Shoal, and this is a TEFRA hearing.
TEFRA?
TEFRA, uh, is, is a moniker that's, uh, it's actually from a bygone piece of, of legislation that relates to when you are going to use tax-exempt dollars that are borrowed, uh, to fund something that is private use. In this case, the private use being a portion of the building that's being renovated by the borough to accommodate, uh, the Turtle Creek Mental Health, Mental Retardation, Turtle Creek Valley Mental Health Mental Retardation, Inc. That is a 501(c)(3) corporation according to Pennsylvania and federal tax law. And what we're here tonight is to allow the public, I will say it this way. TEFRA allows the public comment, either written or oral, on the use of tax-exempt bond proceeds for private use. So, what we're talking about today is, again, the building that the, that the borough's going to refurbish is three floors, a portion of that, a little less than one full floor is going to be occupied by MHMR, and you all have the right to comment or ask questions as to that use. We're going to discuss the financing in greater detail at the Borough Council meeting at seven o'clock.
Okay, so at this time, that's the purpose of this hearing. It is a narrow issue, it's not about the borrowing that the borough is considering. Those questions, uh, will be reserved for the seven o'clock meeting before they consider that ordinance, and these gentlemen will be here to answer those questions about the amount of borrowing, uh, financing and so forth. This, as indicated by Mr. Ditka, is specifically on the issue of part of the building being used by Turtle Creek Valley MHMR, uh, which is a non-governmental use. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Ditka?
Correct. May I say for the stenographer, um, the TEFRA hearing was advertised in the local paper on the seventh of November, uh, and I have the official publication later.
All right, that being said, does anyone have any questions or comments? If so, please, uh, stand and give us your name and address, please, so make sure, maybe you should come up to the podium, because I have to make a good record, that's why I ask you to do that. So, if you please do that, so she can hear what you're saying. Thank you.
My name is Scott Stevens, my address is 111 Caroline Street, Monholz, Pennsylvania. So, Mr. Ditka, my question is...
Excuse me, Mr. Stevens, I want to make a suggestion. Turn that podium so you're facing these gentlemen, and then I'm sure that our court stenographer can hear what you're saying, so your back is not to her. Thank you.
So, um, what you just described is, um, are you here on behalf of Turtle Creek Mental Health? Um, are, are you representing them?
No.
Or are you, or independent, um, and just here to interface in between the Monholz Borough and, and Turtle Creek Mental Health?
You, I am bond counsel to the borough of Monholz, so I am their lawyer, just in the same way that Mr. Vashovic does.
Okay, so, a question for you. So, the, um, this changes the dynamic, um, I think what the, the public's perception was, is that Monholz Borough was going to use two floors, um, for the borough building. Um, now, they're going to add a third floor as, and municipality is going to use three floors of the Willis Center.
Excuse me.
And then, one floor is going to be leased out or rented out to Turtle Creek Mental Health, correct? Is that your understanding?
Turtle Creek Mental Health Mental Retardation, Inc. is using one floor of the building.
The borough's using two, right?
And one is currently open. The reuse has been, has yet to determine.
Okay, all right, then. So, so then, specifically, then you know for a fact, and revenue, so you're saying Turtle Creek Mental Health is tax exempt?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so they definitely will be leasing part of that building, correct?
I believe the right way to say it is they have the option to lease that floor. Under the original agreement by which they granted the building to the borough, they had the option to lease, uh, one floor back.
That is correct. And we even asked the executive director of Turtle Creek Valley, Monholz Mental Retardation, ten tonight, uh, and when we last spoke, or of course off the record, it was her intention that they would occupy that space as they have the legal right to do under the option of the lease. Frank, can you identify yourself and your name for the record, please?
I am Fran Sheedy Boss, I'm the executive director of Turtle Creek Valley Mental Health Mental Retardation. Sheedy, S-H-E-D-Y-B-O-S-T, B-O-S-T.
All right, and Fran, can you confirm that it is the intention of your invitation to occupy and use that space at this time, as you have the right to do under the agreement with the boroughs, is that correct?
Yes, it's our intent to use the floor as we've agreed on.
Okay. Thank you.
And that use is in keeping with your charitable purpose, you're not leasing it for some other purpose?
Correct. It will be part of our administrative operation, we'll move into that.
Thank you very much. And, and another question would be then, then they would be required to pay a certain amount of money for square footage, um, correct? Even though they're tax exempt?
Yes, you'd be paying rent.
Okay. Um, so without violating HIPAA or anything like that, you can ask questions of, of what use of that part of the building is, because the question would be, you know, since it has potential, there, you know, potentially, uh, things that go on in, in mental health, and you have a police department and different things like that, is it, you know, without any...
No, you, you have a right, it's your building, it's the borough's building, so you have a right to ask what our intent is, I think. Um, so we have our administrative offices in Monholz, right?
Okay.
Most of our operations is in, in old hospitals here, across the street. Our intention is to move our administration, so my office will be there, our building people will be there.
The one in Turtle Creek, correct?
Yeah, no, our offices are in Braddick.
Right. Okay, well, I mean, they call it Turtle Creek, but I, I...
They say it's Turtle Creek, I don't know.
So, you're going to move, you're going to move...
So, they're, they're, it's our administrative staff, so we don't intend at this point to move any patient care services...
Okay.
On that floor, and I think that's what your question...
Yeah, it was a safety, a safety type issue.
Right, well, we, we're very, I didn't say, uh, that the Monholz police and the paramedics and everybody have been outstanding and have supported people with mental illness, and so...
Yeah, I, I...
We're very grateful for all the help that we get from the borough.
Yes, absolutely.
But I have to say that, because police here, you know?
Well, it's just, it's just, it's just a question, a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I answered your question.
You know, I think it is helpful to get a viable source that's going to rent space to help pay for the construction, or construction, the, the, the building, so, so you definitely are, what you're saying is you're...
It's our, it's our form that's to...
To at least occupy one floor.
Yes.
And then, we have one floor open, correct?
I believe it's, it's not an entire floor that's open, but it's most of the one floor that's open. Yes.
So, there's absolutely for the day. I have some questions I have, thank you very much.
Thanks, is there anyone, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Lloyd, please come up, identify yourself and your address for the record.
My name is Dan Lloyd, and I live at 434 East Eighth Avenue in Monholz. Just a couple of questions. Um, your firm, Mr. Ditka, when did you get retained by Monholz for this work?
Uh, we, uh, have been working with the borough for a couple of months now, uh, but my work doesn't really start until tonight.
Oh, okay. And how much is the, what's our planned expenditure for the space that they're going to rent?
That I think we're going to cover at seven o'clock, but, uh...
What's kind of pertinent here?
The planned expenditure in the...
Well, if we're going to, if, if Monholz is going to borrow money, tax, tax-free bonds, municipal bonds, to build out space for Turtle Creek, we should know how much of that money is going to be spent on that portion of the building. That's question one, and then question two is, how much is the annual rental amount and, and how long is the lease for?
Yeah, I can say that the, 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 the entire building is being gutted, so anyhow this material is being removed, but the build-out of the space will come at the expense of Turtle Creek Valley and Mental Health Valley Retardation, that was part of the lease option. So, they'll just have an empty shell.
So, you're paying for the build-out?
Yes.
And the, and the utilities.
I don't pay for the four-wall, the four-wall renovation, so that they can do their interior renovation, that's kind of what I'm getting at, what's, what's that cost? Because that's, that's what's applicable to TEFRA, is how much of that public money is being used...
It's actually based on use, because...
On, is being used for the non-governmental purpose. I, I just thought it was a pertinent question. And then, and what's the, the annual rent, and how long are you going to, are you committing for it?
It's part of the original donation agreement, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's an increasing scale based on square footage. I don't have it in front of me, because it's in the original, um, agreement of sale. Three dollars a square foot for the first three years, five dollars a square foot for the second three years, seven dollars a square foot for the third three years, and ten dollars for year ten, to be negotiated after that.
And that was in lieu of donating the building for nothing, so there wasn't any purchase of the property, so that's kind of...
It's part of the consideration, right?
Well, yeah, because that's, that's pretty cheap rent, I mean, you don't really rent anything new and viable for less than twelve dollars a square foot.
North people donate a million dollar building.
Well, it's, it's a million dollar building that needs...
A million dollars.
Seven dollars.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments on this, uh, subject night of this hearing?
I have, I have a question.
Yes, okay.
My name is Rick Brennan, I'm the mayor of Monholz. I live at Woodhill Drive in Monholz. And my question is, this is the first time that it's been announced that you're coming to take the third floor space, so we're very happy to hear that, but we, in essence, we still don't have a solid signed contract, is that correct, Mr. Solicitor?
No, they...
Mr. Solicitors?
That is correct.
We don't have a, they don't have an obligation to take that third floor yet?
No, it's a still an option.
Okay. So, um, does that factor into this, this money that we're talking about? What's the loan term called? What's your terminology called for this?
This is a tax-exempt borrowing, is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
Uh, the borough has a right to borrow on a tax-exempt basis for any governmental use.
Right.
And so, if the borough were going to occupy all four floors of that building per se, uh, we wouldn't need this hearing. Uh, it is only because of the potential use by Turtle Creek Valley MHMRs, uh, that we're having this hearing. If, in fact, the, the MHMR did not use the space, that would not change the tax-exempt status of the borrowing, provided it went to another governmental use or another 501(c)(3) corporation calling another hearing.
Could you repeat that again? Because that was a little bit complicated, if you think about it. So, if they decide not to use the building, you still, we still borrow the money on the, against the building, against the bonds, per se, correct? The money would still be drawn.
Yes, the borough is borrowing the money.
We're borrowing the money, so we're going to be liable for the money whether Turtle Creek comes there or not.
Correct.
So, we're the, basically, we're the bond issuers.
Correct.
So, that was one question I had, and then, and I imagine that the answer will be brought out further in the hearing about when the bond payments will we do, and how much the bond payments are, and what will the total cost of all those bonds be at the outcome of the bond, and how long will that bond take to, to be paid off? So, is that information that we can ask now, or is that information we ask later?
That's for the seven o'clock matter, that's not the subject night of this hearing. You all have the right to ask all those questions, it's just not pertinent for this hearing.
Okay. Um, and you made the comment of utilities, someone made the comment of utilities for the building as well, so the separate utilities, would, would they be, they, there's, it sounds like it's going to be very confusing to keep track of how the money is expended on a, on a bond of this type. So, are we taking one bond out, or will we be two different bonds out? Is it, is it, is that a fair enough question to ask, is how will we track the difference from the third floor to the second floor to the first floor to the basement? And, um, and is Turtle Creek going to take that whole top floor?
It's our initial intention.
The whole top floor? If you can answer that, that would be all I have to ask.
Well, anytime a local government borrows money, we certainly have to be cognizant of the use, to make sure that it's appropriate. Uh, and so, in the borrowing that we're contemplating for the seven o'clock meeting, it is in two pieces, it is in two series, but actually, the series distinction is, is not related to necessarily the MHMR use. The series distinction is, is the tax-exempt bonds, which are representing the known use by the borough and the anticipated use by Turtle Creek Valley MHMR. And then, there's a taxable series, because that is for the portion of the building that is yet to be determined. Uh, if for any reason down the road, the borough wants to use that portion of the building for something that is not tax exempt, uh, it can do so because we're funding that with, with taxable dollars.
So, there is, there is going to be separate issues of bond...
Two series, two series of one issuance.
Pardon me?
Two series of one bond issuance.
Okay. For two different uses, possibly.
All this is...
Contiguously.
The, the use is for the renovation of the building, it's to accommodate any end-user who might occupy the space, okay?
Mr. Ditka, my name's Rob Falls, I'm president of council in Monholz Borough. The second part of the bond issue, would, would that only affect if we would rent to somebody that would be paying taxes? Am I correct?
We're borrowing on a taxable basis for that, because we don't know where it will go. And if you were to borrow on a tax-exempt basis and then put someone taxable in there, you'd have to take remedial action under the tax code that would be more costly. Uh, so, it is actually an effective way to do this, especially with taxable rates as low as they are, and it's only for about twenty percent of the overall cost. It gives you flexibility going forward.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, come up, please.
William Hannah, 138 Carl Drive. I have a question within the agreement itself. You said use of administrative use for the floor you're going to take. In the event that they decide to use it for inpatient or outpatient operations, is that also included in the agreement? And would they end up, you know, you'd have to go to the state department of health, obviously, right there, and all those costs that they decide to renovate would be on Turtle Creek, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Yes. Again, if I could ask you, please, turn that podium, I just want to make sure our stenographer can hear you clearly, thank you, and your name and address, Ms. Frye.
I'm Ms. Frye, 124 West Virginia Avenue, Monholz, Pennsylvania. My question is in regard to the Turtle Creek, um, Mental Health. When will you tell us when you're going to occupy? After you see the improvements made, what's your determining factor for going in on the third floor?
It's a good question, because no one's asked me that before. I haven't even been in the building for what, a year now? Uh, I think some understanding, I've not been included on any of, any of the planning, I don't have any understanding myself of what, what the borough is doing to the building. So, once they're ready, I think Joe or somebody will call me and say, they'll need to start this conversation.
So, you really don't know right now if there are going to be ten offices over there for twenty rooms?
Oh, I, I know the scope of how big the floors are, it's, it's a lot of space on the floor.
And can you say that Turtle Creek is more interested than not interested...
Yes.
...in occupying the third floor with administration?
Yes.
I think it'd be great if we, as taxpayers, knew when you're going to make that determination, because I do feel it's important to us to know if we're getting a rent or if we're not getting a rent taken.
I agree.
We'll appreciate it, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to, uh, okay?
I have just a follow-up question to what Rini Frye asked, and, and that was, I believe the, in the agreement, is it two years from the time that the property is donated to us, that we're held in a gr, in, in a bonding relationship, giving them the first notice?
They're, they have a deadline to exercise that option, I don't have it in front of me, but it, I think it is up to two years. They could exercise it earlier, if they like what they see, they could start making arrangements to renovate in six months. But you're right, there is a deadline and it's for a year.
You know what that is, Joe?
I think it's two years.
Two years from the date that we accepted it.
Right. And Colin and I just met with Casey Monahan, who's the facilities manager, is that his title? With Turtle Creek Valley yesterday. He was over the building with us, so Fran wasn't there, but he's still a representative and has been there with us, has been talking to us, had some advice, he asked us, um, a few questions yesterday, and working well with us.
Thank you.
It was beginning, but I just don't know.
You ought to come up to the podium if you want to speak, thank you.
I have a follow-up question too, Mrs. Stevens. Um, so my question is...
Again, your name, just because she might not remember who you are.
Uh, Scott Stevens. Um, so, what I wanted to ask was, uh, the bond that we're applying for, what is, as far as tax exempt, like, how many years are we looking at, they've asked, whatever numbers that we're borrowing from?
That's not part of this hearing. I tried to explain that earlier, you can ask that at seven.
Okay, okay.
It's not the subject of this hearing, you're going to have that chance, but it's just not right now.
Okay, okay, fine, and I, I think on a good faith basis, from what you said, that we probably anticipate, you know, definitely that you are probably going to rattle on the fourth floor, so, you know, so, well, I think so.
All right, yes, yes, ma'am.
How many is Donna Ondo, Edgerton, J.A., Monholz, O-N-D-O?
Ma'am, will you keep your voice up, please, just because I want to make sure she can hear you, thank you.
My question is this, um, Minister Barholo mentioned a sliding scale of square footage, three, five, seven, and ten. So, it took us up to ten years, okay? Um, do you anticipate renting that space for ten years? Because, um, what you've said so far, you've used the word intention or intent, and that's a miswork. So, uh, I think we, the people, are looking for an obligation, um, if a contract is signed for what length of time we're looking at? Is it three years, is it five years, is it seven, is it ten? Is it indefinite? So, I think we, as the borough, are looking for more of a commitment versus an intention.
I can give you that once we have the opportunity to have a conversation with the borough, whoever I'm meeting with, to begin those conversations, but they haven't started yet. But I can tell you from our other properties, you know, we've rented the, uh, Human Services Building in the town of Turtle Creek, we've been there for over forty years, um, you know, the building in Braddick, we don't move, because we don't have any money, so once we move, we put our roots down and we stay for extended periods of time.
To see if we knew you should...
We're not the type that gets new offices every company uses.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Your name again, please?
William Hannah, 138 Carl Drive. Just, just a clarification, the borough manager mentioned the, uh, square footage per year. Uh, any build-out costs associated with the building itself, those are worn by Turtle Creek, correct? As far as, uh, utilities, they'll pay their share of the utilities, there'll be separate utilities, that'll be in the building. So, um, are there any other things pertinent, I asked the previous question, by change in operations, uh, itself, if they went to either inpatient or outpatient, and they had, you know, the department of health would need to come in and make that? Being the fact right there that the easement or the way into the building, specifically, if you have outpatient and inpatient right there, that would significantly change that. Now, in that event, you know, that construction itself, meet, you know, the state code, that would be worn by Turtle Creek, not Monholz, correct?
Yes. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Okay, yes, sir.
Cliff Timko, 3408 Timberwood. And my question is that, uh, I didn't see in the original agreement where, uh, it prevented you from taking that space and subleasing that space to another entity. And my concern is, if that other entity is not tax exempt, where would that, how would that affect our tax-exempt bond status?
Badly.
They're not going to, they won't have the right to do that, right?
So, I didn't see anything in the agreement that...
Well, we don't have a lease agreement yet, they have an option. When they exercise the option, I will draft, together with their attorney, a lease agreement, and they will not have the right to sublease. You, you understand that, Frank?
I didn't see that in the original.
We don't have a lease agreement.
We don't have an agreement yet, okay. All right. Yes, sir.
Kevin Ondo, Shady Avenue. Um, how long has Turtle Creek actually owned the building? The Willis?
Well, we, uh, purchased the campus in two thousand and eight from the Eastern Orthodox Church Foundation.
Just a question, you, you gave it to the borough of Monholz, but now you have intents of renting it from us. Why didn't you just stay there and renovate the building yourself?
Well, we, we don't have the financial resources that it was, uh, and it was really just part of the agreement, and it gave us an opportunity to maybe close another part of our operation and centralize it on this campus.
But there again, you could have done your, whatever you wanted to do for your office building and, and actually rented it out to someone else, and they could have renovated it themselves.
Yeah, we could have done that. It just really is not, our, our mission is really to take care of people with mental illness. We really are not in the business of owning properties and renting them to people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ondo, is there anyone else?
Sure.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing, thank you. Uh, we're now off the record. Brian and Dave, you're free to go, thank you very much. We'll take a little recess, okay, any questions?
We're going to change, after public, after preliminary announcements, I'm sorry, after preliminary announcements, we're going to move item four, which we were talking about, which we're going to center right after preliminary announcements, so these gentlemen don't have to stay here all night, because you are going to see a kind of lightning sometime. So, I'm going to call the meeting order, and, uh, will you please all rise for the pledge allegiance? You know what I'm saying, you and I never get to meeting together, do you leave us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation, by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks, all right. Okay, preliminary announcements. Preliminary announcements, Mayor.
So, um, Travon is not able to be here tonight, so we are not going to be able to swear him in tonight, and I have just one comment on that, um, a eighteen-year-old senior in high school is hard to nail down for a meeting, so, um, hopefully we can get him here next, next month, please warn me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other preliminary announcements? Saying no further, we will continue with item number... Well, we, they will call me, I'm sorry.
Councilman Ball.
Here.
Councilman Engel.
Here.
Councilman Petrusi. Councilman Stein.
Here.
Councilman Tashaw.
Here.
Councilman Vodidien. President Fogg.
Here.
Okay, now I'll take it back on track. And like I said, we are moving item number four, but that does require a public hearing.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. President. So as indicated, because we have these two professionals here, and I sense that a lot of people in the audience have questions about this very issue, so the president decided to move it to the front of the agenda, which he has a prerogative to do. So that is exactly what we're doing. At the end of this public hearing, which you know we always have when any ordinance is being considered, the council can consider a vote on motion number four. So we're taking this out of order. So at this time, we're calling for a public hearing on motion four, which is for council to consider the approval of ordinance 1599, which of course is a bond issue and a borrowing that this council is considering for renovation and improvement to the Willis Center next door. So at this time, I'll again turn it over to Mr. Dicca, who is board counsel, to give a very brief summary of the ordinance, and then we'll take questions on the ordinance and specifically the borrowing. Thank you, Mr. Dicca.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy is going to go first and give you some of the information on the numbers.
Yes, please introduce yourself to the audience.
My name's Chip McCarthy. I work for Piper Jaffrey. We are the borough's underwriter for the bond issue. We've been working with providing Joe numbers for the proposed project for probably, I don't know, something that's going on for years, maybe longer.
I don't think we did that one.
We've provided various estimates over time. So our role is to sell the bonds to the marketplace. And as Anthony had previously described, this project, right now as it stands, I think our last set of numbers detailed the project cost of roughly six million. Our estimates include all estimated costs of issuance. We assume current market conditions for an A-rated category bond issue, Pennsylvania general obligation. We ran the bond issue over a thirty-year term. Commencing, first payment would commence in June of next year, with principal being paid in twelve December of next year. So bond issues have semi-annual payments. They pay twice a year interest, and interest is twice a year principal once a year. The cost of the project, as Anthony had previously talked about, roughly the divide of the project cost is twenty percent taxable and eighty percent tax exempt. So being that taxable rates are normally a little bit higher than tax exempt rates, we structured the taxable series of bonds to mature first. So those, a shorter bond issue, a shorter taxable rates, that doesn't go out as long as the tax exempt borrowing. So even though you do have to borrow at taxable rates, minimize the impact by a shorter borrowing for the taxable piece. The taxable piece itself would come out to about a million, two thirty-five, and it would go to 2028. The tax exempt piece would wrap around that taxable piece and take you out to 2049, based on the estimates that I provided for Joe. The total cost of debt service annually is about $322,000, $323,000 for the borough's debt service.
Could you repeat that number?
Roughly $323,000. Roughly $323,000 per year. So the, and again, these bonds, the taxable bonds will not be callable. Normally taxable bonds are sold with a redemption date of ten years or longer. Being that they're only going out to 2028, they will not be callable for redemption. The tax exempt piece will be issued on a bank qualified basis, and will have a call date of five years, approximately December of 2024. The borough could refinance on a current refi basis within eight days of that call date in 2024. The borrowing cost, just based on our estimates for the taxable piece, is approximately 2.9% and/or the tax exempt piece roughly 3.22%. I'm sure if you've listened to the news lately, the economy is always in focus. Borrowing rates have gone down. We measure, we kind of use a template called the Bond Buyer Index. It's like the Dow Jones Industrial of tax exempt bond rates. Just recently, that Bond Buyer Index, it accompanies surveys, twenty-year general obligation bond maturities across the country, and comes over an average rate. The average rate as of last week was 2.85%. The all-time low for that index was 2.59%, and that occurred in October of this year. So being that the borough is looking to borrow, it is a good time. Interest rates are relatively low historically speaking. The bond issue process itself takes roughly six to eight weeks from the time we start to the time proceeds are available for the borough. When you close on the bond issue, proceeds are available. We prepare an official statement, an offering document, that is for the public purchasers of the debt. We go through a rating process with Standard and Poor's Rating Agency to rate the borough and their economy and the finances to come up with a rating. We also employ the assumption of using bond insurance. This will enhance, will be a credit enhancement to the borough's underlying rating, hopefully providing lower interest rates. The cost of bond insurance has split out. There's really two major bond insurers left in the marketplace. We will evaluate the economics as it is and the benefit of the cost versus the interest rates that are received by law. We have to make that determination, whether to determine bond issue makes economic sense for the borough. In most cases, we, you know, if the rating comes back in the AA category, normally bond insurance does not make sense because the two bond insurers are rated in that AA category. If it comes back anywhere below the AA category, generally it's our experience that bond insurance does enhance the credit quality of the bonds, and it makes it more attractive for the purchasers of the bonds. Once the bonds are sold, there's a process for all general obligation issuers in the state of Pennsylvania. You have to get your borrowing approved by the state, DZED. That process normally takes twenty to, what do you always say, twenty to twenty-five days. So from the time we would market bonds, just say, if you market bonds sometime in December, say it's, I'm just picking a random date, say it's December fifteenth. It'd be roughly twenty days from that December fifteenth date until we could close on that bond issue and proceeds would be available for the borough. That adds, you know, another three to four weeks to the process. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Okay, questions from the public?
I have a question. How is that bond money paid out?
Yeah, we have to make it. I got minutes, ma'am, please.
Lois Brenner, Orchard Street, Monhol, Pennsylvania. How is that money paid out? Is it paid out in increments or does it, how does that work?
Bond issue, the debt service, just like your home mortgage, when we pay our home mortgage, we make monthly payments of principal and interest. The bond issue is paid in semi-annual payments, so twice a year. So twice a year, you'll pay interest on the bonds, and then once a year, you pay on the principal on the bond issue.
William Hannah, 138 Coral Drive. Top of questions in reference. Total amount of bond is how much?
The, we base the project cost of six million. So the total estimated harm out between taxable and tax exempt bonds on our last run, assuming all costs of issuance, the harm out would be roughly $6,230,000.
And of that $6,230,000, what's your fee?
Our fee would be $62,300.
And you said once you apply for the bond, it's self-estimated time, we stayed approval, and every other thing, it would be available when?
Well, roughly twenty to twenty-five days after we market the bonds, proceeds would be available.
So if it passes tonight, okay, and get all the signatures, and we'll just say December first, it's the process started. Estimated time would be?
I would say before the end of December, maybe sometime, you know, obviously Christmas, there's a wrench in there, but probably before December very first.
In reference to the non-interest part itself, you said if the bond was callable in 2024?
Correct.
And so if the...
That's if they're sold in 2019. If the bond issue moves to 2020, it'd be 2025 would be the call date.
So the reason why the bond would be called because of the change in interest rate?
Correct.
Okay, so...
That's at the option of the issuer.
Correct. I am municipal bond. So, okay, so this is a question for, are we still, am I allowed to ask a question to the council at this point?
Well, you can if they can answer the public hearing, and it's an ordinance they're going to vote on, so yes.
Okay. Few other questions I have then. So at this point, we have up to $7.2 million, but we are only asking at this point for $6 million. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. To date, we've committed approximately $850,000 in borough funds that we plan to fund with the bond now, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. In reference to strategy, and this has more to do with the finance committee, at this point, we will, upon successful, you know, completion of the bond, construction, everything else, strategy, what is the long-term strategy for this building? Short-term strategy, and can we afford the operating costs itself to run through buildings? Is that, of those costs, been estimated at this point by the finance committee? They have not. Okay. In reference to demolition and moving the best, I did read in the engineer's report that, in the engineer's report, I hope he can detail that, several unforeseen conditions were encountered. So I would like at that point if that could be elaborated on in the discussion.
Yes, I can elaborate on that. So when they demolished the exterior wall, there was some fireproofing. It was uncovered on the exterior steel beams. And in the electrical closet, there was also a material that's known as pyrobar, pyrobar, excuse me. It's a white fireproof masonry block. We had those tested yesterday. Our asbestos testing company suspects they're both going to test negative for any additional asbestos. There was one additional piece of pipe that was found, but frankly, based on our discussions with the demo contractor, they're surprised how little unforeseen conditions they found for a building in a project that size.
Has there been any change orders requested at this point?
No, there's not. They already had a schedule.
They have schedules. I saw November first. You can look at it. I see it. So at this point, we do not anticipate anything more than approximately $680,000, correct?
Nothing significant. I mean, there's significantly, there's significant demolition complete right now, and there's been no surprises to this point, major surprises.
I got an email at 606 today. I just got it. Attached are the results from yesterday's testing. It was good. The vertical pipe, because it's a pipe that came down, was positive for asbestos. The fireproofing on the...
This was like a ten-foot section of pipe, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You haven't seen it yet either. The fireproofing on the spandrel beam was positive for asbestos, which was, the beam was the spandrel, spandrel beam, the five of the exterior beams with the fireproofing. Okay. And then the biggest concern that they had, the fireproofing on the hull ceiling was negative. And then flat, power block and mortar were negative.
So we'll have to convene and figure out how we're going to deal with the fireproofing that's on the spandrel beams.
So the beams itself are out of scope itself, so they wouldn't be an extra?
They were buried in the wall, so, yeah.
Unforeseen.
If we had to do removal, which there, we'll have to address that with the architect. It's possible to leave some of that in place since it's going to be buried behind the wall in the new building. But we'll, I'll give an update on that at the next meeting.
To date, we haven't found any structural problems with the building itself?
No, it's in great shape.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Paul Serechin, let's go, S-E-R-E-C-H-I-N, Turtle Creek 72 Ravine Street, Monhol. My quick question is, when do you plan on raising our taxes to pay for this loan? I think that's an eventual occurrence for private money.
At this point, I don't believe there's any intention of raising taxes. We hope not to. Sorry?
We hope not to.
No plan to do that.
As of today, there's no plans of raising taxes.
Well, I'd like to add to that, to keep in mind, every year, employee salaries go up, equipment costs go up. So if there are going to be any need to raise the taxes, it's not one single thing. It's cumulative of taxes. Taxes haven't been raised for thirteen years, so, but for this building, there are no plans of raising taxes just going to be able to move into that building.
Thank you. Nick Arul, 179 West Larch Street. Question of the amount with the percentage, the two percent or two and a half percent, and can that change? And do I understand that those rates can change?
Yes, but these are based on current market conditions that we read. Obviously, we won't know the interest rates until we actually live in one.
I understand that, that I made, say, five years. Is it a fixed rate?
It's a fixed rate. Yeah, these are fixed rate bonds. I probably didn't make that clear.
Okay, that wasn't clear. And if for some reason, the borough could come back and find money, can it be paid off early?
Oh, yes. You can put money...
With a charge?
You can put, you can put money in escrow to pay off the bonds off. And they can be, the tax exempt bonds can be called in on the redemption date, as early as ninety days before December of 2024. You can, you can call them in, in advance of that with bond proceeds, but they would have to be taxable bond proceeds to do that. But if the borough somehow has money, they can put money invested in an escrow to pay off those bonds when they become callable in December of 24.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, please.
Marianne Fry, 24 West Virginia Avenue, Monhol. I happen to have the article from the Valley Mirror dated October 31st. For the record, clarification of the new Monhol Borough Building. It was listed as $5 million to renovate Willis Center. And the last words are, result in no highly, highly emphasized tax increase. The first statement was, result in a state-of-the-art municipal building, but nowhere did you state to the public that that didn't include the fire hall. I just want to make that statement. I also want to ask Colin, on this Hatch Report, under the Willis Center, additional environmental testing was performed yesterday. How much, do we have a figure on that yet?
How much it costed? I mean, the entire survey of the building was $3,000. So he was out here for a couple hours yesterday. I don't know.
So that would be in addition to?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would assume that it's less than $1,000 with the work, but I'm...
But we don't assume anything, right? But that's okay. Second thing, under this, on your paper, or are we only discussing right now the Willis Center? Because if I can move, I'll ask, the question is, know if not, I'll go. But my other question regarding the Willis Center is, how much to date have we as taxpayers spent on the Willis Center that's not been covered by the bonds because we don't have the bonds yet? the bonds yet? I know it was proposed six hundred and forty-nine thousand plus for the update, update money.
Any fees, including legal fees and engineering fees, will be, will be covered by the bond?
So in other words, everything that we've spent will be retroactive and go towards the bonds, so taxpayers will have done nothing. Okay, so for me to ask this, I'll just clarify. So it doesn't matter if we move ahead over there or if we wait until we get the bonds. As far as any more work being done, everything will be covered by the bonds, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
So my question is, um, and it's not a simple, not a hard question to answer, but the advertisement in the paper said up to seven point three million, and we were starting at five million, but we're asking for six point two million or six million? What's the actual number that we're actually applying for?
The, uh, my estimates are based on private costs of six million.
Okay.
The not-to-exceed ordinance incorporates, uh, a not-to-exceed amount of ten million one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Ten million?
Ten million one hundred and thirty-five.
Okay. And, and that will be included in the bond issuance?
No.
Or how does that work? Could you explain that?
Anthony will provide further clarification on this. The state allows issuers in Pennsylvania to pass what's called parameters, or that's what's parameter resolution for debt. They allow you to set maximum parameters on the issuance of debt. They, they allow you to set maximum principal amounts and maximum major strays. However, they don't require this just in an aggregate amount, they require it on an annual basis. So you have to set principal amounts not only for the total, but annually each year what your maximum principal amount would be. So when we say we have a borrowing cost here of six million dollars that goes out thirty years, we don't know exactly yet at what rate and how these bonds are gonna be sold because we're not in the market with that yet, and we don't have a rate. So we inflate the principal amount not only on a total basis, but each year to allow us the flexibility to enter the market without having to come back and get another ordinance or another resolution passed and missing the market and, and not locking in those rates. The ordinance authorizes a project fund deposit of six and a half million dollars. So obviously, the borough is not gonna issue ten point one million dollars in bonds to only fund a project of six and a half million. The inflated cost is due to the parameters that the state regulations permit and that we have to follow. So that's why you see the inflated cost, the inflated, inflated amount in the ordinance.
Seven point two million or whatever that number may be. But you're saying ten million, ten, ten million one hundred and thirty-five, thirty-five thousand?
Correct.
So, cost exceeds seven, uh, six million dollars. That, that number there is used to deal with an overrun of cost expenditures, is that what I'm imagining?
The project cost that I got recently was roughly six million dollars. So if, before we market bonds, they find out there's additional costs that they wanna account for in the bond issue, we are authorized to up that amount that the ordinance permits, up to six and a half million. So that's the only additional cost.
That would be the highest amount that we would be able to issue?
That'd be the highest amount that the bond issuer fund in a project fund, funds available for the borough to spend.
Right, and this is, let's make this point, this is specifically used for the Willis Center building, not any other projects in the, in the town that can this money be used for?
That's correct.
Correct?
No, it's not correct.
It's not correct?
No, it's not. Yeah.
Uh, again, I'm Anthony Didka, uh, I'm from Vinsworth, Shoal. The, the ordinance, uh, allows for, uh, the renovation of the Willis Center, paving, streetscape improvements, and various and sundry other capital projects throughout the borough. We do that for this reason, uh, Mr. Mayor. If you borrow on a tax exempt basis, and this runs to your question, i- i- if, if we borrow on a tax exempt basis and we borrow six point five million dollars, and at the end of the day you spend six point three million dollars, six point four million dollars, the extra hundred thousand dollars has very limited applicability under the federal tax code. You either have to spend it on a capital project, or you have to park it in an escrow fund to pay back bonds. And so we put that description in there a little more broadly, so that if you end up with excess dollars, again, you end up with that extra hundred thousand dollars, and you know you can't immediately pay it back to the bondholders because you can't, you can't do so until two thousand twenty-four. You can apply it to another project that the borough may have, uh, i- if you have a pressing need. So technically, the answer to your question is, the, the ordinance does permit renovations of the Willis Center, paving and streetscape, and various and sundry other capital projects throughout the borough.
And to take that question one more step then, if, say, we did end up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left over, do we have to go to you as the, the issuing attorneys for the, in charge of the bond monies, to expend that money? Or do we just go ahead and expend it from, from our, our budget?
It's at your discretion.
It is at our discretion.
Right, and again, part of the reason we put that description in there i- is for that purpose. If we just said that we were gonna renovate the Willis Center, and you might say, why wouldn't you do that? Well, because if we ended up with that extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars, by state law purposes, we would have to amend this ordinance to apply it to anything else, which involves the same process that we're following to enacted in the first place.
I understand.
Which means the advertising, and this hearing, and a vote, and a second ad. So we, we put the, that catch-all in there for convenience for the borough. It's not intended to allow you to, to go spend a hundred different things.
Right.
It's intended to just catch whatever's left in the bucket if there's any left. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. So, payments are due twice a year on the, the debt service?
Correct.
And per year, you're figuring three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars per year?
Roughly, yes.
On, on the debt service? And what, and that's, that's the, the debt of the, of the, of the amount. What is the other payment per se going to be for the, I guess the fund, the number?
The principal.
Principal?
The, the, the principal's included in that debt service.
So that would be the total payment?
That's the total payment, correct.
And then, so that's paid twice a year? I thought there was another payment that was gonna be paid out one time a year?
It's, okay, so the way the, the, the payments are structured, payment dates are June one and twelve one. You pay interest twice a year on June one and twelve one. Principal is only structured to be paid once per year on twelve one. And the, the, the amounts of principal will vary throughout the life of the bond issue.
Okay, so, and I'm probably certain that in the beginning years, the bond, the payment is minimal, and as it increases as the, as the term goes on, is that how they work?
No, the debt service is level.
They do level?
It's level debt service, three hundred and twenty-three thousand throughout the length of the bond issue.
So can you give us just a cost estimate of six million dollars? What will our payback be? How much will we have paid back through thirty years?
Over the life of the bond issue, approximately nine point six million.
Nine point six?
Similar to your mortgage, you're gonna pay.
I'm sure of that, and that's, that's, I just want that knowledge to be out there, so there's no question on what the number is. I mean, it's, it's a debt, make no, make no mistake about it, it's a debt, it's a finance, it's a mortgage, it's a payment. So, per year, I, I, I need you to tell me, what are we gonna spend per year out of, um, the payment? So let me, let me ask you first. The six million dollars that we get a lot, we, we, we come through this, we go through all the process, okay, Monhol, we're gonna give you six million dollars to refurbish this building. You write us a check for six million dollars, we put it in the account, and then we pay them, we pay out our, our costs.
Yeah, your, all your, all your payments will be billed by your pay agent, your bank of record. They will send the borough a bill twice a year for your debt service.
Did you wanna say something?
When you borrow money in this fashion, we're going to give you the proceeds of the bonds on the closing year. So yes, six million dollars or something thereabouts, whatever the number turns out to be, will be deposited into a construction fund, a project fund, whatever we're choosing to call it, that is within the borough's possession. The borough, if you're gonna borrow on a tax exempt basis, I'm now jumping into my description a bit, if you're gonna borrow on a tax exempt basis, you have to have a reasonable expectation of spending eighty-five percent of the proceeds of the bonds within three years. So we've already discussed this. Uh, the answer is that these proceeds are gonna be spent more quickly than that. And so the money will be in your possession, you will pay your expenses, first of all, to reimburse the borough for the prior expenses, that will come out on the day the bonds are issued. Then, uh, your ongoing construction costs will pay as you go, with the eye that we're gonna spend eighty-five percent within three years.
And then, so there, there will be no bank overseeing the payments, it'll be at the discretion of our council and borough manager just to pay this back. There won't be anyone saying, there won't be a third party looking at the property and saying, okay, we'll, we'll allot money out.
Correct. This is not a drawdown loan, the money is already in your hands.
What? Well, your, your pay agent is custoding the funds, so they're gonna see their requisition for funds that come in, it's gonna be a record requisition of those.
A good way to explain that is, just like the, um, you're familiar with the, the bond that the waterfront did, and then they had the outside bank and the banking market, it's the same, same thing, same.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I, I've not been privy to this conversation, so I'm asking these relevant questions, which anyone would wanna know, right, about, you know, how is this payment gonna be done? You know, what, what are we gonna pay back? So per year, we're going to pay back, am I correct? Is the total number three hundred and twenty-three thousand, or will it be doubled?
No, total.
That's it?
Total.
Thank you, I don't have any, I, I don't have any other questions.
Can that change? Yeah, I, I-
Three hundred and twenty-three, can that change?
Well, yeah, it can change based on the amount that's borrowed and the interest rate at the time of borrowing.
The interest rate, you said we sign it today, whether by December, so, so it's a certain rate, right?
Whenever we, the day we market the bonds, your rates are locked in.
Okay.
Change, it, it changed day to market.
Let me back up for a second, just so everyone's clear. The day that we actually go to market the bonds is the time the borough locks in their fixed rate. At that time, those payments, those interest rates are set, and they are locked. And then when they close on the bond issue, you get the funds. The only way that those interest rates would change and not be locked is if the borough did not follow through and close on the bond issue for some reason, and you would not be obligated to pay it back if you did not close for some reason.
Now, the rates right now, from your expert opinion, how are they?
They're great. They're historically low in terms of tax exempt borrow.
Could they change those three months from now?
Yes, they could change. They could change every day, they're on a tweet, they're on a tweet.
In other words, like you said, December, so, so if we don't go through with this for longer some reason for two, three months, the rate could change.
The rate could change, you hear it locked.
So as soon as we lock, we'll know what the rates are gonna be. Two or three months, a year. Tomorrow's three days?
Correct.
You gotta go, we don't, we couldn't do it with all the rest, we might bring it. No, not with it.
Okay, uh, yes, next. Paul Serechin again, thirty-seven two Ravine Street. Okay, let's say that you, you go ahead with the six thousand, or excuse me, six million dollar bond, and that's signed off, signed, sold, delivered, and now you have cost overruns. There's a government project, there's always cost overruns for government project. You need to borrow another two million, what happens? Is there gonna, uh, another, the whole process starts over again to get this extra two mil?
If, if that's what happens, if that's what they need, then yeah, the process would ha- would happen all over again for a long time. Yes?
This, this somewhat, I guess it's pertinent to the conversation, not necessarily the bonds, but just looking at the, the budget statement that was put out, the comparative income statement from yesterday. And, and just from interpolating, it goes through November nineteenth, it looks like revenue is down about six percent last year or this year. And, and then we're gonna add another three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in debt service. So if we take that six percent, that's a half a million dollars, five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and then the additional expense of three twenty-three, you're looking at eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in shortfall. Not necessarily budget deficit, but, but the difference that, that we have to make up if revenue doesn't pick up. So, you know, can you tell me how much one mil generates in taxes? It generates about, well, when I was here, it's about-
About three hundred thousand.
No, about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's over three.
Yeah, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So at, at eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, all things being equal, because other things can change, you're looking at over two mils difference. I'm just saying, because it's important that the taxpayers, no, unless you're gonna sell this building or, you know, I, I don't know where you make the difference, but it looks like it's about a two and a half mil difference, you could take the money from somewhere else, possibly, but it just, that point needs to be made.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir?
Yeah, William Hana, one thirty, Carl's Drive, a couple questions. The only way that the interest rate could change itself besides timing, when you get there, okay? So if there is a big change in the market, a few things going on in the government today, that could change it, and, you know, these bonds are callable.
Correct.
Okay, so the question was asked by one of the members of the council, could this go up, the cost? The answer is, yes, because in fact the interest rate could go up.
No, they're locked, they're-
Complete lock?
They're, they're fixed rate bonds, they don't change.
He's asking between now and when we sell bonds.
Oh, between now and when we sell bonds, for sure they're gonna change. Yeah.
The way, out of the three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars per year, so the delta was like three million six hundred and ninety thousand, just do straight math. So if you looked at that, if you took that three million six hundred and ninety thousand and applied that by thirty, that's about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, mind you, you're gonna do an amortization table, and it's gonna go down if you're pressed it, but just in general, the payback that interest over thirty years, it's about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars per year, essentially.
Are you asking me what the average interest cost is per year?
You got it.
Well, I mean, it's, it's gonna be based on your borrowing rate, but the interest is going to decrease each year, and the principal's gonna go up each year.
I asked for the amortization.
Yeah.
So is there, at the time that you do that, these gentlemen here, you know, are going to be informed, they're gonna watch their principal and interest rate payments, so the finance folks understand that?
Yes, I mean, they have the, these guys have the final say on everything. I mean, we're gonna show them rates, we're gonna show them what debt service looks like. If something drastic happens, you know, I mean, they're gonna be fully informed and they have final say on everything.
So in, in reference, I have another, two other questions. When, do we have a status from TKE or A, I forget the architect's name, when they're gonna be finished with the plans?
We're hoping back end of the year.
End of the year. And do those plans include the fire department, or are they exempt from the plan?
Exempt, no.
They're exempt from the plan. So it, it's a reasonable expectation that we will have operating costs of two buildings, correct?
Absolutely.
Unless, you know.
The thoughts are open.
At this point, the plan is that the fire department will stay in the existing building, everyone else will move to the other building itself. So you gotta heat the building, so we're gonna have operating costs in two buildings, which is my question that I asked earlier, at what point are you going to estimate those operating costs? Now, obviously, the borough manager has most of that.
We're working through that now.
Okay, is that, when do you expect to?
The, we talked about this, Colin, with, with the operating cost in here.
Right.
These lights won't have to be on as much as they are. Administration offices won't have to be on as much, and, uh, the, so the operating cost of this building is gonna, is gonna decrease dramatically. We go over there, everything's gonna be upgraded to the-
Sure.
The LED, so, so. We go over there, everything's gonna be upgraded to the LED, so, so.
We're not looking at that right now, but there's a drastic change-
Yeah.
-of what we have now.
The, the, the new building is obviously gonna be much more efficient. New insulation, uh, you know, new air handlers, uh, LED lighting. So, I think, uh, once our, once the architects, MEP engineer is finalizing those plans, we'll get a better look at operating costs there and be able to take an estimate of what will be required here prior, prior to moving into construction.
Do we, do we plan, reply for the bond before we have an actual final plan or, well, an initial plan from the architects themselves, okay? So, we're getting the bond, I mean, just, just looking at it, just, you know, we did the initial thing right there, we did the initial study, it was like thirty-three thousand dollars. The last meeting was approved for a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for TKA. We developed plans for Willis Center, to come up with blueprints, everything else you could go to bid, okay? And six hundred and eighty thousand dollars was, you know, approved right there for the demolition and removal of asbestos from the building. And the, you know, to paraphrase what you said, that was either for make the, you specified, the engineer said, was either to sell the building or to make it ready for construction.
Impress the construction schedule. Yep.
I think a lot of questions for that.
We're not on anywhere.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I have another question.
Yes, mayor.
So, typically, what this gentleman from Ravine Street asked was, what, it overran so much? So, what if the price comes in, because we don't have an actual cost estimate yet from TKA or an actual bid? So, just asking silly questions. What if the job comes in at five million dollars? We have a million dollars left over from this bond issue. So, now, we, we come to the, the problem of, we have a million dollars sitting in our account. Can we, when we have to wait till two thousand twenty-four to take that million dollars and put it back into the bond? Is that correct, to pay that off?
They will not be able to be called in for redemption until that date. But you can establish an escrow at an earlier date that is invested, earning interest up until that date.
Okay. Or we could choose to spend it any other way we might. We choose to.
Part of the road, it'll be okay, right?
Right. I just wanted to bring that out there, so, you know, I know he brought that question out about what if it costs more? Well, what if it costs less? And, and now's the time to ask questions. Please ask them if anyone else has any, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Somebody named Dave Lanchel, thirteen twenty-two Ravine Street. It's really not related, it's pertaining about the question that he asked about, let's say there is a million dollars left over. Uh, I have a real serious problem in my residence, and it has something to do with the suing system. My basement gets extremely flooded, like the human feces all the time. I cannot keep things in my basement because it's constantly being flooded. I have videos, pictures, everything. I have called the borough multiple different times. I've talked to, uh, people, trying to get help with this situation. And I've got notification that this responsibility is mine when I got video of the actual storage blown off, human feces flashing four feet in the air, and I just get no help with this from anybody. I'm a single parent, raising a child on my own, living in a thirty-five thousand dollar house because I don't make a lot of money. And I chose to live in Mon Hall because of the cost of the house, trying to raise a child on my own. So, back to what I'm saying, is there any plans and anything to try to like help me and four of my neighbors that's going through this situation?
Sir, I can, yeah.
If there's money left over, I mean, you should be taking care of people regardless if there is money.
Let me just say this, wait, 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 because this really, your question, your issue, and I won't be disrespectful, but it's not pertinent to this hearing.
I know, so.
I understand what you're saying, so if there's leftover money, it's council's discretion. If they think it's a borough issue, and I don't wanna get into that now, because I'm just trying to keep this on track. So, you're certainly welcome to stick around and, and address this further. It's not pertinent to what we're doing on the bond, but you're asking if there's extra money? It will be up to council. They think it's a borough problem, potentially.
And that's why I noticed, stated at the very beginning, it's not very related to what we're talking about.
I understand.
But the part that grabbed my attention was, and I know nobody can predict how many dollars will go, but I'm just saying that there, and, and even goes with the money that's being spent to renovate this building. In my mind, things should be taken care, issues should be taken care, that are, are present, not moving past them to try to do other things when you have present problems. That's the only reason why I asked that.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else on the motion of the ordinance? Okay, that concludes the public hearing. Thank you all for your important questions at this time. Becky, can you call the motion, read the motion for council's consideration?
Motion to approve ordinance fifteen ninety-nine in order to so formal action consulting a debt, debt ordinance under the local government unit debt app.
And we'll call vote, please. Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tishon, second by Mr. Ballas. Uh, we're gonna have to do a little call vote in this.
Councilman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Eagles?
Yes.
Councilman Petrucci?
Yes.
Councilman Stone?
Yes.
Councilman Tishon?
Hi.
Councilman, I'm sorry, President Foss?
Yes.
Do they, you guys?
Public carries. Do you want to lead her with some documents? You want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. And we're taking a five-minute recess because they get the six signs, so. Public speakers, unless you've limited to three minutes, must avoid references to personality and personnel-related issues. Uh, first speaker, uh, refresh.
You know, hey, Pat, can you turn the table around so we can have, or, turn around, we dress council around the table rather than?
Don, don, don.
That's all right, fine. Sure, watch. I'll take it.
Do you want to just tell me, uh, resolution number or motion number one? Where is that property and how much do you, do you get for it?
The vacant property recovery program, we don't get anything for it. It's vacant properties where the county more or less gives to the homeowner next to it. It has to be adjacent to the property. They petition the county for it, and the county does everything, we just have to approve it.
But you just so we don't start into a thing of that now. Those questions, please reserve those, and anybody else, reserve it for public comment. Other agenda items, items for consideration, just because we do them now then.
I see what you're saying.
It's a good practice, too.
Really is. So, we don't mind if it's a chance to bring it up, but it's just easier to do it that way, because everybody else will jump in and wanna do this out, too.
I have to admit, most of my questions were regarding that bond issue, so they were already answered. And right up to that, if you have anything else, so I'll talk to you about the motion.
We'll see you in a little bit.
Thank you.
Your next speaker, Lloyd Orr. Lloyd?
Hello, Lloyd Orr, eight forty-six Ravine Street. I'd like to talk about an issue. A sinkhole has developed in my yard for the third time. The first time was quite a few years ago, and I believe that I was going with Mr. Tishon then. And what had happened was, there's a walkway bridge from Creek Street over to a residence. And the borough had replaced the wall and put some concrete on the floor of the creek. The floor of the creek ended at my property, the new floor, which created a whirlpool effect, that's where the water was dropping off during the runoffs. It created the sinkhole there. I talked with Mr. Tishon, they replaced, uh, the whole wall section, they put a whole new floor, uh, concrete passed my property. Since then, the concrete has deteriorated, and, uh, half of it is now gone. And now, I have a new drop-off in the middle of my property, which has not created a sinkhole. The first time I replaced it myself, I filled it in, it has since washed out a second time. I was hoping to get that concrete replaced, and, uh, the backflow, or the backfill, is my yard. I met, I met with Mr. Rahola, and, uh, I'm not sure if the engineer, or if I'm here to make comments.
Yeah.
It was in my yard, and they, they seen, you know, where I already filled it in. We were with a third gentleman, and they had asked that gentleman, did we do that work across the creek? And the gentleman said, yes, it was done by the borough.
Do you remember?
I, I don't. I'm sure, I didn't do it personally.
Remember, from my memory, we, we went down there several months, four, five months ago. That's on the line, right? There was, there was a sinkhole in your yard.
Yeah.
Uh, kinda in between your swimming pool and the creek.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I, I would have to go back and look at my notes to say exactly what was said, but, I mean, I don't think there was any, necessarily any borough utilities there, or, um, from, from what I remember, there was kinda unknown what was causing the sinkhole.
It's a, it's a second sinkhole, and it's just, it's the exact same situation that happened a few years ago, where the, the cement drops off, creates the, the drop-off and the whirlpool effect.
It's erosion due to the, due to the creek.
It, it was cement flooring placed there by the borough, and it's since.
You're talking about the creek lining, that it's deteriorated all up and down?
Not, not the creek itself, it's the, what was placed on top of the creek, basically.
The bottom, the, the concrete channel that lines the bottom of the creek?
Yes. And it has, some of it is, most of it, I have photos, Colin, most of it is pretty thick, but right where the erosion is, it's very thin.
Yeah.
And that's what broke away.
Unfortunately, it's, it's pretty typical, all up and down homestead run. There's retaining walls that line miles of, of that creek. And there's concrete channel liner there, is what I would call it, that line, um, at least eighty to ninety percent of that entire creek. I mean, it would be millions of dollars to, to repair and replace all that. And, and we've been told that it's, we don't really have jurisdiction to either. The state of Pennsylvania owns the stream, and the, the homeowners own the property that abuts the stream. Is, that, that's the direction that we've received from the Department of Environmental Protection, uh, State Senator's Office, PNDOT, uh, who else, Army Corps of Engineers, we've had.
This is, this is, to say the process that we went through, we, we called, I talked, Senator Costa, Senator Representative Austin Davis, Ryan Schimmel from the DEP. PNDOT was down there with us, Sheriff Moon Sirianni, Sirianni Moon. We talked, everybody down there. I called, I contacted Congressman Doyle's office, and I met with an individual by the name of Jeff Shafer. Jeff Shafer went down there with us, looked at it. He brought a person named Bill Senatez down with him, and we got the DEP again involved. And, and the DEP, and I, I will get you a letter, Russ. The DEP sent a letter to us, more or less saying that to stay away from it. Now, if we go down there and we see that it, if we can see that it's something that the borough did, and it's, it's obvious, can you go back and check some of the records, right?
Yeah.
And that, to see if there's any work down there?
I don't know.
I have no problem going down there. We're going by the advice of what we were told, told to stay out of the stream.
I mean, like, just to access that, the stream back there? We would need to get right-of-entry agreements from every resident, all up and down the main street, from eight thirty-seven to West Smith.
We don't have any legal authority to go and make any repairs to the street better.
I'm sorry, the repairs that were made, were made by the borough.
And they had other parts.
On your private property.
No, in the creek.
In the creek. Well, I, I don't know. They shouldn't have done that, they don't have authority, and without the consent of the Army Corps of Engineers, we don't have any right to go in and do any kind of repair.
You're saying they shouldn't have done it, but they did do it. And it's a photograph, a newspaper, taking out a newspaper.
If we wanted to help you out, I mean, if, not saying that we don't, if council-directed, if we could help you out just to go back there, we would need to get a joint permit from the Department of Environmental Protection and Army Corps of Engineers. We would need to, to get a right-of-entry agreement from you to have a contractor go on your property. And I mean, this is, this is a-
Was that the first time?
This is a massive undertaking, would, what, what we're talking about here. And it doesn't make sense to, to fix lots of it.
Well, what was done the first time?
This was the first time, you know, I'm kinda recalling now. I referred it to our public works, they went down and-
There was a federal grant.
Did that, was the federal grant was thing that-
Was that how Stanton correct works?
Yeah. And had Mon Hall. There was a federal grant, I'm just reading this newspaper, it was a federal grant, then, and the federal government, the federal government, uh, then, we must have obtained authority to get in there. And we don't have the right to go in there and do anything. The engineers are a hundred percent right. And we could be fined. We go in there and make any kind of repair or correction, which we're not even legally allowed to do, uh, we could get fined by them.
Is that, is that what was done the first time?
I don't know. I wasn't, I don't know what year this was done, you know?
I'm not saying that that is what-
My recollection is I referred it to our public works, they went down and-
And they fixed it?
They, they did some work there, that Army Corps.
The federal government was involved.
That is a, as a separate kind, that money wasn't allocated.
It came to us, it didn't come to you. The, the federal money-
That's not what I'm saying. That money-
Is there, is there an A on that?
No.
That's what I mean, that money is in what was allocated to me.
How long ago did you take that, Jack? You know?
The first, the first one that was done was maybe ten years ago.
Mickey Markovich did it, so that like gave you some reference. You know, Nick's been going.
Recently, how long ago recently? Since the first time it was passed, ten years ago?
The first one was about, maybe about ten years ago. They, they redid the, the walkway, and they put that first flooring down. And that's what caused the original sinkhole. They came down and did all that work, about ten years ago.
You got to see it today?
And that is what, is the area, causing a second sinkhole, further down the river.
How much it cost, then he trumps it under homestead law, including repairing all his foundations.
Guys, I will, I will contact the Bill Senatez of the DEP's Creek Improvement Program, and learn, learn what's going on, and quit in just here.
I know, I know.
Yeah. You wanna, you wanna send me an email?
Fill out paperwork, I have all this information, don't you?
Nice, good evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll email him and you, I mean, we're aware, I, we're aware of the issues down there. We, we tried, new, as Joe described, I mean, numerous times to, to raise awareness, you know, on, on the local county level, um, but.
Becky, could you give, give Russ a, um, copy of the letter? Both mine to them and them to me.
And Steve going back to the same thing, that it was the work that Mon Hall did that is deteriorating. So, obviously, it was done at one time. I know that you guys, you saying you need all these permits and everything, and everything, but it obviously was done once. And that is the work that's faulted or deteriorated.
Well, we're trying to look into that, and I'm, I don't know if that was even appropriate that we did that. I'm not saying we didn't. But, well, we shouldn't have done it. But well, we shouldn't have done it, but it was done. So, you know, we can try to look into it.
We can look to see...
But again, you can't go in there without, even if we, if we legally could, which I don't even know if we can, couldn't do it without approval of the state. We need the funding.
We just go in there and look at it for a week's property, whatever.
They called us, looked at it.
I don't remember the walk-in, though. I've, we were back there several months ago. I can stop back down there within a week and take a look at it and try and give you guys a little...
Say what he's talking about. What work the borough allegedly did and what is failing out of that work. So we understand the scope.
I'll show you a photograph of it.
Joe and I'll stop him.
Before you go down, call me.
Okay. And then get an engineer's opinion, so we can get it to the Bill Senatez. And then we'll give him the opinion and put it in there.
Yeah.
That'll be all right, sir?
As long as the fall's moving forward.
Just so council's aware, and you know, Joe can tell you guys this too. This isn't an issue just at one residence. This is typical, all up and down Homestead Run, from West Mifflin all the way to 8th Avenue.
Yeah, yeah. This is not a borough obligation to repair, and they have no right to spend extra dollars to repair eroding creek banks, or creek banks. They just can't do it.
I just like to know what's wrong with that.
Yeah. But we'll see. If we get work down there, we'll go look and try to figure out what happens.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, reports from borough officials, I'm there.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my med. So I'd like to start tonight, and especially thank the firemen. Monhol Fire, thank you very much. I know Halloween night was a terrible night. I took it on myself to cancel Halloween. I took a lot of grief from people saying, oh, we shouldn't have done it. I've been sick for quite about a month now. And at that night, I was away. And I got a call from Roseanne or Becky, I forget who called me. And they told me what was expected. And I looked at the forecast. There were hurricane, there were tornado warnings that night. And it was just a terrible night. And I could not live with myself if a young child would be walking through our town and be hit by a branch, a limb. So I took it upon myself to do that. Also, the firemen, I know it changes your schedule completely, because I know the firemen and the police department as well. But more importantly, the firemen and policemen are working there already. But the firemen are geared up for that.
It didn't bother us, and of course, we're in charge, we made the right decision.
Thank you very much. But I want to thank you publicly for the work you guys did. And for the parade, the Halloween parade was a success again this year. It was very nice, it was very well attended.
I'd like to say, I think you made the right decision also. I was actually visiting my sister in the south central part of the state, Hannover and North area. And most of the municipalities did cancel Halloween.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to say you did.
So...
Yeah. Just one point. I think it was a smart decision, too. I agree with it. But you know what happened to video drive which are butts West Mifflin? West Mifflin didn't cancel. We usually have, maybe 50 kids come. We had 184 there. Because West Mifflin doubled down. On all is good, we didn't go when it was, when we, you know, when ours was canceled. A lot of faces I didn't recognize that. I'm blaming you.
Out of my way, persuasion, I'm not a bottle of electric candy. That was all right.
I'm taking the heat for that, for the pitch on. And honestly, I got a lot of calls from other people who were telling me the same thing. But honestly, that's what Halloween is supposed to be for, for kids.
It's still the right choice.
If the kids are going out there and they're not dressed in costumes, if you want to give them some, that's up to you. But it's for the kids, honestly. So that being said, the parade again was a success. It was very well attended. It rained a little bit that day, and it still didn't keep the kids away. It was very nice. And I thank everyone involved for the parade. It was very nice. I want to mention that we have a new drop off box in the borough hallway here. It's for drugs, prescription drugs. And I want the people of the town to know it's there. We've sent out letters to the community. It is a bit of a burden, it being there. But honestly, it's there. I wanted it there. And thank you to the police department for working with me, getting that put in place. Okay? Moving on, I'd like to congratulate Kevin Onda, Mark Fallon, Jason Stein, for winning the election this year. Congratulations to you three, Reedy Frye. Congratulations on your work as well. And whoever else, I believe there was a couple other writing candidates who were out there. Congratulations to everyone who put forth an effort for municipal office. Congratulations. Light-up night is December 6th this year. It will be Friday at 6:00 PM. I wanted to announce that as well. And apparently, we have a cat issue of in Monhol Borough. And I know that we have one issue going on up in Monhol Garden. And I've been sick for about a month now. And I try to answer my calls as much as I can. And honestly, I've not spent a lot of time in my office. So I started reviewing phone calls yesterday and today. And I do call everyone back who has called me. And I've got another issue of another person. What do I do with cats in my neighborhood? And I know there's another person on Cardinal Drive that has cat issues going on. And I'm sure it's not alone. So, you know, cats are, and I've had this discussion when I was on council. And they laughed at me, because I, my opinion is that cats are a not domesticated animal. They're wild animals. I think they are. But I'm not going down that argument anymore. Because they're pets for some people as well. So if you have a pet and you control your pet, that's one thing. But that's a pet. But now these cats are uncontrolled out in the neighborhoods. And that becomes problems for other people. So...
They're going to bathroom underneath my porch. Stinks.
I, I'm not getting in the middle of this argument.
The problem is people are not getting them fixed. I volunteer to show them.
I know that. And that's why I'm personally not getting involved in this argument. But it's been brought to my attention before. And it's being brought again, and not by just one area. Several areas council is through the borough. So I'm sure we'll hear more about this.
There's one on my street, and they're, of course, feral. And they're trapping them and bringing them to shelters. And they actually caught like three of the kittens so far. And one that they caught the moment.
You only have one?
Yeah. Well, that's the one I know of that's trapping them, that are taking them to shelter. The other person on my street is the one that takes them to shelter.
You can call Animal Friends and they can get you in touch with people that will come out and trap and remove.
They've been doing it themselves, but I'll tell them that.
Yes.
So I'm going to make that announcement. Animal Friends, for the camera, they can do that. Lastly, I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. And I would like to wish everyone in the room a wonderful Thanksgiving as they're coming up. It is my favorite holiday. I hope you enjoy your holiday with your family. And I look forward to seeing you all next month. Thank you, Mr. President.
What is this sewer authority meeting?
First Wednesday of the month.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday of the month.
Report of the solicitor.
In this room, 6:30.
There's a item on the agenda, just one thing left for me to talk about. Review of council, it's number five. People's gas request of easement grant. And I talked to the manager about this, they sent a agreement over. Just so you understand my review of this before you consider it revoked. So I don't know if you have the papers, but there's a diagram on the back. They want to move what they call a, it's a gas pipeline easement grant. And they have a measuring and regulating station, which is 20 feet by 20 feet. They want to construct a building in the back end of Trouton Field. They say the recurrence station on Cambria Street. I don't know where it is, I haven't seen what it looks like. Anyway, so they're asking the borough for an easement so they can construct this measuring and regulating station. They want to pay $3,000. And they want to be able to have unlimited access to this station, this area, via vehicles and pedestrian access. Granted, all work. Of course, that would prevent the borough from making any use of that property above it or around it. And they want to put pipelines in. So if you want to do this, they don't have any indemnification clause in there. That's our protection, I would at least insist on that. So I just wanted to explain to you, I reviewed this. The agreement is not ready to be approved, but it does have a protection that we need in there. Conceptually, if you're in agreement to let them put this there, then you just lose, you will lose the use of that property essentially forever. And they only want to pay 3,000, which to me seems cheap. And I don't know if that's negotiable. Those are my opinions on it.
I asked her for a description. Give me an idea of what you're talking about, what you want to do, rather than just sending me that agreement. If you want to read that, you're more than welcome to get an idea. We also may not want to vote for that today. We may want more information, possibly pictures, or some kind of, conceptually, what they actually want to do there.
Yeah, let me read this. So, and I talked to Joe, I said, I have concerns about what they want to do. And also, they said they're on protection. So he contacted the representative of people's. And here's his explanation. The existing equipment, which is located below ground, this is out on the street. You can't see it, would be removed. And the new equipment is going to be above ground. Any vegetation in the new location, and this is wooded behind that. It is like left field area of Trouton, wooded back there. Any vegetation in the new location would be removed, and the area would be leveled. The new regulator would be installed and connected to the existing gas line, which is in the street. The area around the regulator would be fenced. Slats can be used in the fencing to obscure the equipment, if that is preferred by the borough. The areas to spend would be restored. These things are necessary for maintaining the gas system that provides service to the area. I'm sure there's a legitimate reason for asking for this. They aren't visited by company personnel more than twice a year unless there's a problem in the area. So that gives us at least some more detailed explanation on what they want to do. Thank you.
Right, well, you want to meet me there in the next couple days? Or just look at it to see? I'll show you where they want to put it. You might have a better idea of what type of bell type system they want. You might even know one where they're somewhere else.
Are you looking at the small film show?
Yeah.
The left on nine, the big two.
That wouldn't be the only one on there, there's several on there.
Yeah.
And that's what like it has. Lee High Street, there's one on, I think, Woodlawn Road.
Great. If I'm not mistaken, Monhol Baseball just got a grant from the campaign to redo the fences and the field and everything. I don't know if that's going to interfere with that.
100%, I just, I have a draft agreement.
I've seen the outline of it.
Yeah. I prepared a construction agreement, and that's my next point. Is that I don't know if that might interfere. If they intend to extend the field beyond that, their construction plans, I don't know. But this proposal should probably be presented to maybe Joe Ducar, somebody who's in charge of that project.
That's not going to, it's not going to interfere with their project whatsoever. However, I had that on my, my report last week to discuss this. So it was one, Becky automatically put that on as a motion, which was fine. I was going to have a executive session at 6 o'clock to discuss that in more detail. Maybe, like I said, Rick may have some better input. And it's no sense taking it off. But we can table it out, you should. Yeah. I think we should.
We don't have to table, we can just take it off the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, the agreement, no matter what, even if you're willing to let them do it, the agreement does not have the language protecting the borough that I want to see in there. So it's not ready for approval, and that's why I spoke up.
Do we need, I mean, do I need to vote to take that off?
No, you can just remove it.
I'm okay taking it off, generally. If anybody wants to put it on the agenda tonight, let me know. Let's take that off for tonight, we're not ready for this here. The solicitor works this agreement out, and we know it's the right thing.
Yeah, I'll wait until, Joe, you look at it with the mayor, if it seems okay. Then we can work on an appropriate agreement.
I will ask her as well, I mean, person from people. Give me some addresses where they have them. Maybe we can take some pictures of the signs, whatever.
Thank you, that is my report.
Thank you, Solicitor.
Hey, report to the manager.
I want to report that Rob Folsch will be the third vice president of the Alligating Boroughs Association. We'd also like to add a resolution for stormwater management grant. We have an opportunity to, we work in that, we have a scope of work of 250,000 dollars. We'd like to apply for a grant to, to a storm project.
That'll be, that'll be in the form, that'll be in new motion, Ron. So, yeah. Well, we got to let the public ask questions about it.
Do you want me to elaborate a little bit on the resolution?
Let's do that, and we'll get it out of the way. Go ahead.
Okay. So I talked about this a little last month. The grant is through a program. It's through the Commonwealth Financing Authority. And the grant program is called the PA Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant Program. The state has $40 million earmarked in this budget year that they're giving for grants for water, sewer, stormwater, and flood mitigation projects. This particular grant is targeting projects in the range from 30,000 to half a million dollars. So as part of the application, they require the governing body to pass a resolution at their meeting. It basically says, we intend to pursue this grant in the amount of X dollars. It's going to be used for this. And then it also designates a person, the officials who are going to execute all documents and agreements between Monhol Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority. And then the last part of it is just the secretary attesting that it occurred at the meeting and it was voted in. So it's pretty simple. I have a copy of the sample ordinance. I apologize for not having this to you guys sooner. I was going over the requirements last night and realized that needed to be done.
Could you state what the motion should say?
Basically, have it there.
Here, let me see it, Joe. Yeah, there will be a motion to, let me just find it. A motion to request a grant from the Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program to be used for stormwater improvements.
So moved.
Okay.
It's not the motion by Mr. Son. Second by Mr. Patruzzi. All in favor of his...
Questions and comments?
When you go to apply for it, do you have to specify where you're going to use it?
Yes, we have a project in mind on, it's in Main Street. Kind of like in between Lee, up by First Commonwealth Bank, where there was some flooding earlier in the year. But it's on Main Street.
So that was out where you had that small swimming pool? You had that one?
That's right, yep.
So do you anticipate using all the money for that project?
It has, it's out, it has to be used for what it's allocated for. And it does require a 15% minimum borough match. But the money's there from the state, and we could potentially get a $250,000 project. And the borough has, would have to kick in 32,000.
So you just said it requires a 15%?
Minimum 15%.
Okay, you didn't read that earlier.
I didn't, I neglected to mention that. I knew you'd be interested, that's why.
I am interested. But I know sometimes there are matching stuff like that. That's why I have.
I leave stuff out so you can ask the good questions.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem, Donna.
Yes, Scott.
Real quick question. So for one project, do you, do you plan to sign double projects or one project?
We can submit multiple grant opportunities, but I only have one grant project in mind at this time. But hopefully... But hopefully, it's a program that continues.
Kate and Mark.
Uh, that flooding up there, is that Munt Hall specifically, Munt Hall's problem, or that's close to the same line? Would that be?
This is, the project in question will be all in Munt Hall.
Hey, just to explain what they're talking about, that was First Commonwealth. That was a Duquesne Light issue, um, that they put a pole through, through a sewer. Therefore, they backed up and it was, clogged everything up and then washed all of a sudden. Yeah, washed everything down into the First Commonwealth parking lot and clogged that catch basin, their catch basin up. So, we, we obviously thought it was our job. We took our contractor from Cheyenne Avenue Project immediately to get up there to fix it. Uh, they fixed it. They sent us the bill. We sent it to Duquesne Light. They sent us the bill back, said, "Not our problem." We sent a letter back to them and we got a check very quickly. So, that, that one, that's a different issue, but it's right down.
It's close to that.
It's a couple blocks down. When we find out, there's not any catch basins in the area.
There's.
A little more or less building.
When, when we were looking at that issue, we noticed there's, there's not a main storm sewer down large portions of Main Street in, in many areas. And, you know, there's a shortage of inlets over there. We have got some complaints from residents that have had basement flooding. So, when this grant opportunity popped up, this was a project that popped into my mind and said, "This is something worth pursuing." It fits the size and fits the intent of the grant.
Right, thank you.
Paul, and since you mentioned replacing, does that mean they'll have to pay curb to curb once the project is completed?
Well, it'd be our contractors, so they'll pay what we tell them to. But yeah, they'll, they'll pay it.
Is that going to mess the paving up on Main Street and so forth? And that was just fixed.
Well, we're putting catch basin against it, so they're just going to dig the catch basin up, put it in there and run some pipes. So, it's not going to make, they're not replacing it.
Well, you're going to have to, how are you going to run the pipe, the underground? Are you going to put something under?
This is not an area that was just paved.
Okay, this is up, this is up towards, heading towards the light? You said it's Main Street. Main Street was paved from Elizabeth down to, um.
Across from Revera.
Yeah, then, yeah, so it's going from Revera to up.
There, there hasn't been a big paving on Main Street yet.
Oh, water main brick.
Well, it'll, it'll be paved nicely. I promise.
I'm going to hold you to it. If they have cement curbs, are you going to put cement curbs out?
Yes.
Instead of the asphalt curbs like they put in Mike Street when they paved Mike Street when I had cement curbs.
Flashlights.
Is there any question?
Uh, just speaking about, you know, you might be able to get another grant. Would you consider helping the people down on Rebean Street with all those water problems that they keep talking about? Can you, can we look into that? I mean, we're fortunate.
Forty million dollars isn't going to scratch the surface with that down there. I mean, I.
I know, but maybe if you would get a grant this year and, and then keep it up. I mean, fortunately, it seems like most of us don't live down there. But if you walked in there in those people's shoes and you hear the stories.
I think if it could fit those parameters, I'm sure we would go for it. But it would have to meet those certain, you know, requirements and parameters.
And the cost.
Probably there's not a lot of grants that would, you know, that would be that kind of money. But if something came across, I would get a word on that too. So, there is some stuff going on.
The only other thing I want to touch on is, we have, um, last week, we had a general.
We have a vote on that?
No.
Oh.
We have a motion on the floor, right, by Sean and Mr. Trussey. Okay, let's have a vote on this. All in favor saying aye to apply for this grant?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries? You did. Go ahead. Let me hear your report.
Um, Mr. Rinklebauer, he came last week to the, to the workshop meeting on Red Oak Lane. Colin and I went up there and, um, yesterday. And to look at it, try to find out what the problem is. It wasn't very wet yesterday. And the water that we would have been able to take had salt and everything, so we couldn't get a good test. So, Colin advised for us to, well, um, get a one call and go in there and cut a piece of, um, asphalt out where underneath, where the, where the water pipes are and get a sample to find out if it is actual water, what kind of water it is.
Yeah, if it, if it tests positive for chlorine or fluoride, we can know that it's coming from a water, a water pipe, and it's not groundwater.
Mr. Jeno, can you inform Mr. Rinklebauer of what, you know, this step we're taking? And if he wants to be there when we do cut that out, you know?
What about the grant?
Yeah, oh, that, yeah. Yeah, Mark Fallon. I know you, we've been talking about buying street playground and the, and the, um, and the money, the grant for the playground. We probably know this already, but we did receive two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars to refurbish.
But we have to match that. It's a matching grant.
And that was thanks to our steward Austin Davis, Instinct Senator Costo, that, that grant came in.
Okay.
A question. I have a question for Mr. Boll. Have you made, made any progress about the area down on eight, eight thirty-seven where the railroad property is? And the, I mean, it's just a mess there for the, um, where the entrance is to the waterfront. It's a beautification project there.
Yeah.
Have you talked to the railroad at all? If not, would you like me to?
No.
I'd be more than happy.
I'd make that note every time I go downtown and knock on that door and I forget.
I will do that if you like.
I, I could do it too.
You, you say the word and I will do it.
We got approval from every, from everyone. I talked to, to Johnson from the Alligating County. They're going to, he sees no reason why they're not going to give up permission. So, um, Kerry, Kerry Cannon is, is moving forward with the project.
She, he is moving forward?
Yeah, that's his project. That's not a borough project. We're just assisting because it isn't in the borough. But that's their fund, their project, their architects, their contractors.
But it, it reflects on our borough, so that's a big, that's a, and I'd like to see a Munt Hall sign put there, welcome to Munt Hall there. I'm sure Munt Hall Borough would be glad to pay for that or sign there. So, um.
Is that, is it, is it the holdup with the railroad? Is that the only holdup?
No, there's no really hold, the holdup is, is permission.
Permission to enter the property.
Well, we, we have to get their permission on that side to do it. And it's not, it's weird how it is titled. It's not CSX or, you know, B and O Railroad. It's some kind of odd name. But there's an address where, you know, where the office is, it's downtown. So, I'm just planning on knocking on doors, walking in there one day. And, uh, and like I said, I, I forget, you know. But that, the reason it's not, it's not started is not because of that. It's not started because of the summer.
Okay, is that so, your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I report the engineer.
Um, pretty much already covered everything that I already had. Our paving contractors wrapped up for the year. They're going to come back and complete their work on Main Street next year in two thousand twenty. Uh, we gave them a delay. They're holding, um, their, their costs are going to be the same. And we figured that we could get some of the paving scheduled, uh, hopefully during spring break or when there might be an outage or a break in school. One other thing that I wanted to mention just related to a grant, uh, we were talking, I was talking, Joe and I were talking with our grant writers. There's, um, there was a multimodal grant opportunity through PennDOT that was due a couple of weeks ago that we passed on. I didn't think we really had a project, um, that, uh, would have been viable for PennDOT, something they would fund. However, the same grant program is called a multimodal grant through D C E D. It's the Department of, uh, D E C D.
D C E D.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Joe. Uh, it has a multimodal transportation grant. The application is due in July of two thousand twenty. And funding is available for streetscape projects like along Main Street. Um, it also could be something that could fund a parking ride or bus station, uh, bus depots, um, vestibule, a bus vestibules, anything that involves, say, walking and taking a bus or parking your car and taking a bus or walking and getting on a bike. Any project like that can be funded, uh, so counsel where the community has any ideas. Um, obviously, one that I thought of was streetscaping along Main Street, beautification projects, landscaping, new lighting, um, paving, new sidewalks, handicap ramps. Um, but if anyone has any other ideas, uh, feel free to approach me or Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When is that due?
July of two thousand twenty. So, a lot of time on that one. Say, say not to exceed the other thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, report the public work supervisor. Somebody see.
Oh, I go ahead and get ready for first. And put the lights.
I saw the lights already started.
Yeah, the lights just started.
You always do a great, you and your crew and Lenny and everybody else you send out, you always do a great job.
I'll make a question. What is this ordinance we got attached to the block and we're, about parking? Is that supposed to be there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to Coastmont Alley's for the parking.
Okay.
We're going to have a hard time at the garbage truck room.
Gotcha.
There's a lot of streets. Most of that's already marked. It's just some of the alleys have to mark it here.
So, that'll just be no parking, no, on our garbage day?
Bring the orange all the time.
All the time. I report the police chief.
Mr. President, uh, five hundred and five calls for service for the month, twenty-one arrests, sixty-one citations issued. I know it's been discussed up here numerous times by the Main Street cameras. Most of the Main Street cameras are up and running right now. We solved the hit and run with it last week and aggravated assault last week.
Great.
So, they're, they're up and running. We have a problem. Bob and I spoke about, about hitting it. There's a short in the one wire up by, up by Park School, I believe.
It's up by between Pizza and Monument.
Yeah, it's underground. So, there's really no way that the Coast Guard, these went up there and fixed it numerous times. But they fixed the above ground things or it's going to be cautious if you go underground for this. So, cameras are up and running. We solved two crimes with them in the last week, so.
So, that's, that's, the one that has a problem is close to Park School, I guess.
It's a monument.
No, it's a monument. Okay.
The monument's on a timer. We have to get that, get to get that changed. And there's a short in the one pole wire that's causing the cameras to stay out. Every, everything below Pizza Hut is working fine.
Anything on, uh, that cop and can thing that we talked about?
No, we are.
Like you and the mayor, I think, brought up the, the budget.
Uh, we, the cop and can, we were talking about, we were talking about an intersection camera for eight thirty-seven.
Okay.
With a licensed plate reader camera.
Oh, that's great.
That's what we want. We want something down in that eight thirty-seven corridor. Our two vehicles, we have equipped the licensed plate readers are up and running and working fantastic.
And that's, is that, is that movable or is that costly if you want it to move around? That's not like a cop and can. It's, it'll be costly to move around.
No, this would, this would actually be hardwiring cameras into the traffic light system. If you go by, uh, Commonwealth and hook to the Duquesne Road, if you, if you're sitting at the light one time, look up at the lights and you'll see cameras facing in every direction. Their licensed plate reader cameras. I, just demonstration with the mayor with his plate. And it let, you know, it.
Sitting everywhere in this.
We enter a plate. We're looking for A, B, C, one, two, three. We enter it and it'll show us wherever that plate went through any reader in Western PA. So, we might have one of those on eight thirty-seven.
That's great technology.
Yeah, we, we talked to, uh, Joe and I have mentioned to our, our grant writers, see if there's any help they can give us with that. We're told it's about a fifteen thousand dollar project. The cars were about fifteen thousand. We paid for that on asset court. We're looking for a partner to help us with, uh, the other one road.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, okay, report to the fire chief, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, October, we responded to fifty-three, uh, emergency responses. Uh, so we were pretty busy. Uh, fortunately, most of the major fires were not in Munt Hall. They were in neighboring communities. So, we put in a total of a little under fifteen hundred man hours. Um, our response from dispatch to time on scene remains just south of seven minutes, which is really, really good. Um, if you, in my report, you'll see that number five purchased, they replaced the aging, one of the oldest engines, fire engines in the fleet. They purchased a used fire engine and it's in unbelievable, it was an unbelievable buy that they placed in the service. Um, they paid for that with their own funding. They outfitted it and it's ready to go. It's in the fleet. It's going to save us on maintenance costs because the old one, which is back there now, which is killing us as far as maintenance out of the first vehicle, um, coverage and all that stuff. So, um, thank you to everybody that helped with the Main Street, uh, the Halloween parade. Um, thank you, Mayor, for what you said, but, uh, we appreciate all the help that everybody gives us for that. Um, a couple of final things is that, uh, just to give you guys an idea, um, cancer is the number one killer of firefighters in the country. It's, it used to be hard to say it's now it's cancer, so it's a high, uh, concern of ours. So, you rarely anymore see a fireman with a dirty helmet, the dirty gear and all that stuff. At least under my watch, it should be relatively clean. We're supposed to clean ourselves. We have to buy face wipes for everybody. We have to keep clean. And today, we put in about forty, we put in service about forty-five specialty hoods that protect our head and our ears and stuff like that. And they're cancer preventative, um, hoods. They cost about a hundred bucks a piece. So, we bought about forty-five of them and passed them off to those, to a set group of firemen that are going to, you know, be the ones generally entering those dangerous atmospheres. So, we're constantly working on that and improve that area where we're made safe. People don't normally think about that being a fireman's, it's pretty dangerous in and of itself. Now, we have to worry about cancer as well. So, we take steps to prevent that sort of stuff so that our, our members can go home to their families and not take that stuff to them, to their families, pick up their kids, hold their kids. They've just learned a fire and now they're covered. So, we're taking steps to prevent that. Um, I'll be at, my, Lenny and I will be at the Met House next Tuesday at six thirty, uh, sorry, one eleven Caroling Street. Um, if anybody's interested, uh, we'll be going to fire safety talk up there. I know you certainly won't, but ten. And, uh, do you have any questions for the fire department?
Can you mention the banners?
Uh, good thing, good thing. Um, also, Mark and I will probably be the only two people on Saturday putting up the banners. Taking down the banners, veterans banners, so we could use help. If anybody's interested and has nothing to do on Saturday, believe me, I'm sure it's going to be snow and. Because it wasn't when we were, we were here last weekend, but we couldn't put it all together. Um, so, we're going to take it down this Saturday. It'll probably start somewhere near ten o'clock.
Yeah, nine, ten.
We're going to take all, all the banners down and it takes a good bit of the day. So, if somebody wants to help and help for an hour, thank you. If you want to help all day, you're a saint.
If anybody's interested, where will you be at the meeting?
Number four.
Number four. Get the fire off number four.
Also, if you're driving on Main Street, please be careful of people carrying banners across the street and with the fire truck. There's, there's some people just don't pay attention.
A really good point. It can get hazardous out there because people are organized if you get into the mall or something like that. They are about being safe, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I got one question.
Yeah.
I was told that in addition to number five, find an engine, they also got a grant for one. Is that accurate?
Uh, it is.
Okay.
Uh, don't ask me for any details on it. It was a FEMA grant.
Yeah.
Um, so, at some point, they'll be selling the engine they just bought because the FEMA grant came out of left field. And they'll be purchasing a new engine, which is coming into the field.
Those FEMA agents are far and few between and very difficult to get. So, please listen to them for the, for the.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, report to the code of workforce officer.
You have a copy of my report I need to add. On the number six, distill value harm for recommended approval of the certificate of the program for phase one changes to Carnegie Library of Hilton at five ten each time.
for phase one changes to Carnegie Library of Hope Center at five ten each time in my hall. The application was submitted by Robert Russ of MCF Architects on behalf of the library. Um, with the, their phase one is they're gonna be doing major renovations to the inside of the building and some renovations to the outside. It's in the historic district, so they gotta go in front of harm. What they'll be asking harm, what they asked harm was they're gonna be, um, putting in two windows and a door to have access to the in, inside, um, elevator. So, um, it was, he may have submitted it past by the, the board, so all we have to ask is councils accept this.
Also, along those lines, though, I've been working with them pretty closely on the fire protection improvements that they're gonna be making there. They're gonna be, uh, installing the fire pump sprinkler systems, updating the fire alarm and space project. I've been working with them, um, a couple times a month, meeting with them regularly on that.
I think Carol said it cost, oh, the cost of project fee, right? Fifteen million dollars, fourteen, twenty million.
Anybody have any problems with us allowing them to move forward?
No.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Moving on, public comments on items for consideration.
Mr. President, I, this, uh, again, I'd like to add, and this is in respect to Rainey Frye and, uh, Donna Dreschman. Uh, an item that is not on the agenda, I'd like to, uh, propose. And, uh, I missed the, uh, workshop meeting last week and, you know, when I met my, uh, agenda, the, the towing and the, you know, we'd been, uh, dealing with that since August and September. And I was curious why it wasn't. And there were some concerns here and there. So what I've done, I've cobbled together a motion, uh, that I think is fair to, you know, the good service we've gotten from MAC and fair to Hobly Automotive, who have submitted what looks like, you know, a, a really good bid. So what I'd like, just for the benefit of the public, not to make the motion yet, but if anybody wants to comment on it, I'd like, uh, Becky to read the motion.
The new motion is going to be motion to approve towing contracts to MAC Towing and Hobly Automotive on a month-to-month basis, MACs for the even number months and Hobly for the odd number of months, beginning December first, two thousand nineteen.
And Wes Smithlin has that process and evidently it works. And again, I think this is fair to good service we've been getting and, uh, and it, you know, it gets to be competitive and, uh, you know, we hope it works out.
And then on the number ten, question.
It'll be a number nine because we've removed number five altogether.
And with that, uh, ad, uh, I will then go into, anybody have questions on the motions? Yes, Don.
Donna, I have on eight and nine. Um, I read nine perfect because it seems to be the, the two. Um, I'm not sure, and I don't know if anyone else is besides you guys, what is police longevity? What is this, this like twenty, almost twenty-seven thousand dollars per.
Twenty-nine?
Yes.
An officer who has five years of service or more, um, gets ninety dollars per year for every year of service after five. He's been in the contract for much longer than I've been here, which is twenty-five years. It's pretty standard in the industry.
I wasn't sure what that was. So that was the easy one. On motion eight, um, I'm not a, a finance wizard by any means, but I happen to see that our expenditures, the total for this time period is, um, compared to last month is, is huge. Um, and I know, and, and I read the asterisks, um, you know, there was the large amounts for paving pensions, for insurance and for the dumpster. But all in all, I mean, I, I could just take the first one, administration. Um, this month from last month, it's up like fifteen thousand dollars. Did, did we purchase a lot of paper pens and, I mean, wood? Or if you want me to fill out a write-down, I'll do that as well.
Yeah, we could give, we'll give every check to you. If you can just do that, it'd be.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know what was easier for you, but it just seemed like a, a really large increase from month to month.
Over the last, over the last, I can't remember everything.
Yeah, oh, I know. And I don't expect you to, but, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Rainey, it was good stuff.
Uh, I was questioning about number one motion, number two. When you said we, we don't pay anything, the county takes over. That's, I understand that. Can you just tell me which, where was the problem that they proposed in motion one and motion two?
It's Mary Street, um, three oh four Mary Street.
Yeah.
The family owns a house there. There's two empty lots next to her. They want to acquire them. They take care of them anyways. Um, all we have to do is, the county says it's in my home and just ask us, the council asks to approve it to allow them to become their yard.
And you know what, Rainey, sometimes they don't take care of them. And when we do, when we take measures like this, it gives them incentive to take care of them.
Oh, I agree. Let's take pride in my home. I, I feel like it. The one thing I do wanna ask, I don't know if it's considered a vacant property, a vacant lot, so I'll just ask. The property that goes from Rebecca Street over to Hill Street, you know what I'm saying? On the east side of, like, I'm in West Virginia.
Vase-shaped water?
East, right?
Vase-shaped water?
Yes. Quite of a large wooded spot, okay? Houses are not on either side of it. So they want to be, if somebody can't put in, all of a sudden you get that property. Somebody owns that property?
I'd have to look on the county website to see.
I need a nice picture. I need a nice photo.
Somebody owned it because, somebody owns it because there was a contractor that was parking their equipment there and they were told to move it by the owner and they moved it.
Oh, by the.
So someone owns it.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's what I wanted.
Thank you. Scott?
On the motion, if you decided it, the shell, which is motion, uh, which is, uh.
Right.
Uh, so the solicitor had some, some, uh, what, what's gonna happen with that? Because if you take a look at other counties, other townships, when gas companies start building above ground and start piping, you know, it starts becoming a really big mess. You know, I don't know if that's what you're.
Well, this isn't gas exploration. This is to provide gas service to the residents. So they need some equipment there. But Michael, Joe and the mayor are gonna get on there and survey the property and then talk more to the representative and maybe get specific drawings or, or a reference to some other location that is very similar to what they want installed so it's a better understanding.
Okay, so that.
So that's the next step.
Well, the, the, the reason being, there's a valve that was in the ground. They had to go into the ground twice a year. Turn it, turn it up in the, in the for, because more gas is used and turn it down in the summer. They don't use that technology anymore, so they wanna remove that valve and put it into this new technology. The place where it works the best is, is on, on our property. So they're asking us, can we do this on the property? If we tell them no, who knows where they're gonna, where they're gonna put it? They might put it on somebody's home property right next door or something. My assumption is the mayor's a plumber, even though more about that than me. Why not take somebody that may know this?
I was just worried, you know, when you start building above ground and you see this all over.
You did. You see.
Yeah, you start seeing, you know.
When Commonwealth, right by, there's, there's all kinds of stuff up there and.
Yeah. Like, that's the only thing, you know, that I was just asking.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, motion one and two, so the same person's gonna inquire both of those vacant lots, correct?
Very strange.
Three oh, three oh four Mary Street's gonna take them both. Um, if they decide to build anything in addition onto their house and they would have to do, um, do, um, like a reverse subdivision to combine the lots together.
They can combine the lots. The county handles all that during, through the vacant property recovery.
Okay. But they would have to come to planning for the recommendation to combine the lots or do.
Just like, they would, they would handle it just like anybody else would do in New York.
Okay. Because they couldn't put a garage up unless they combined a lot with their primary structure of lot, correct?
Yeah, the county does this.
Depends on our zoning. The answer to your question depends on whether our zoning allows that. I don't know.
Okay. I'm just asking.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, I don't know.
Okay. Um, motion, I guess it would be then seven and eight, once all the bills are paid, books are totaled?
Nine hundred sixty-seven thousand.
Okay. And with motion nine, with, um, the offsetting the towing from the odd months and the even months.
That'd be number ten.
That, that, that.
You're right, tonight, no.
Okay, yeah. Um, this is something new that the borough is trying because we've never done anything like this before. Am I correct?
I'd say yes, we have.
Okay.
In the past, we've always had, you know, a primary, secondary or whatever.
Ten year.
Okay. Did we flip a coin to see who gets the odds, who gets the even, or did we just decide? Okay, thank you.
Well, and, and Don, I wanted to make one distinction. So, well, that's gonna be primary and it's gonna be secondary. So one month, primary, secondary, next month. So they're, they're both available for calls.
Oh, I understand where the one can make it, the other one will build it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, I mentioned three.
Yes.
I'm very familiar with pro champs. Yeah, I just wanna know as far as mortgage foreclosures are pretty easy to identify via the sheriff's website each month. How are they going to, what have they told you? How are they gonna identify the vacant and the rentals? For any kind of, you know?
Rentals are pretty easy. You just go on the county website and if it, if the owners, what they usually done in the past, companies have done in the past, you'd go on the county website and it's, hey, thirteen oh three, Main Street was owned by one person, but the mailing address is different. More likely it was a rent, they weren't living.
So they're gonna search every property in my hall?
Yeah.
Can identify them for you? Okay. What kind of fines are we talking about?
Well, I think.
They're gonna force the same orders as we already have in place. So if you own your home and you don't cut the grass or the weeds or there's broken windows, they're looking to, then like letters and hopefully get the responsible person, like the mortgage company, because the owners in those cases, when their property is being foreclosed against, don't care or they've vacated or gone. So typically, a mortgage company is a responsible business entity that will do it. If not, then it would have to be a citation in front of the magistrate. It's up to the magistrate what to file.
Well, usually with the mortgage companies, though, that pay back the properties, they have REO departments that handle all that. So if you get in touch with them, they're pretty good about handling maintenance on properties.
No.
But like, we have vacant.
I disagree with you. But the problem is, is like, say, if Mr. Project Manager foreclosed on his, uh, or not, the walkway of his house, they would leave him, Mr. Project Manager.
No.
Yeah, that's what they've been doing.
No, that's not what they do. I do this for, that's not what they do.
That's what they do.
When they take it back at foreclosure, it goes into the bank's name.
But it takes years.
It doesn't take days.
It takes years.
This addresses an intervening period. So the problem we have is a bank would start mortgage foreclosure process and then the delinquent owner would stop paying anything, would stop repairing the property and then might flee, just leave. But the entitled owner is still the person, not the bank. And the bank could drag it out, or maybe they don't try to take ownership because they don't want the burden. This makes the bank then responsible to register as the mortgage foreclosure entity. And we could compel them to be responsible in this interim period, which as you know, can last a long time.
Well, I see more of a problem with the vacant and the rental than I do with mortgage foreclosure properties. Because the banks don't like the hold on to them. Um, but when there's vacant, I mean, other than the residents that live next to a vacant property calling and reporting it, I mean.
Well, we're not sure how it's gonna work. I know they're doing this in other communities in Allegheny County. And we've heard good things. It's no cost to the borough. So hopefully it works. Any improvement is better than no improvement.
I agree.
So, yeah, that's the idea.
Yes, I would quite soon on, uh, I had a consideration on rate.
The payment, that's right. And that's, that's the payment by contract, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
So we, we have three or four payments and was it based on percentage of completion or was it an actual date?
It's a progress payment based on percentage completion.
So we believe at this point they're between twenty-three percent, so.
They have the entire second floor, like ninety-five percent complete. The mechanical equipment out, I believe they're about, that's, that's.
We're comfortable with that.
Yes.
Yes, Carol.
Uh, whatever happens to the code red phone system? Has that been installed or working on?
I was just thinking about that the other day.
It is installed. We talked about that the other day, Becky and I, and we, we gotta get a more of a marketing campaign, put it on. We, anybody can go on and, and set it up. We just go and get the directions out on the website and then invade it in Valley Mirror. Just talked about that the other day.
Okay. Not everybody has appeared, not everybody gets to Valley Mirror.
You'll be able to call one eight hundred number. You'll be able to, um, call one eight hundred number, set it up. And then anytime there's a, there's a call, it will, it'll, uh, call your phone.
And I don't know, a while back, uh, Mr. Rodin asked about maybe setting up a, you know, an open, a, open house, telling people how to use it if they cared about it. You know, how to use it.
Oh, like, places like the Met House and let them know, ladies groups, church groups, things like that.
Maybe the Met House and go to, uh, right, he says.
I think it'd be logical.
Right. So those people, I think, would be a good idea, really communicate on towards them somehow. Put that in even, have something, you know, up here where anybody's interested in getting, you know, funding out about it. Don't know about.
That's something that's gonna be happening over the next few months or something?
Can we get that, uh, can we get that done?
Get what? Get it on the website, yes.
Can we get that story to win? Now Carrie's got that story. She was the one that.
Yeah, we can get it on the website.
Also, send something down there. And I know, you know, a lot of people could read it. A lot of people don't even buy it. They may read it up at the barber shops and whatever.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Questions? Yes. I thought of the, for consideration, there was talk about the property down at the waterfront in the last eight.
Nothing, nothing going on, of course, I know.
We're still considering selling it?
Well, at this time, if anybody wants to come up and offer something, I guess they could.
Okay. I mean, I know there was a question around lead, so it's, uh, it's for sale.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not legally, it's not legally listed for sale right now. We have to go through a process again, but it doesn't, didn't work out. If someone expressed interest, we could start the formal process.
Okay, so that's if there is an express interest for the property.
At, at this point, that's the status, yes.
Okay, the reason I'm saying, well, if it's worth something, it can infer some of the costs.
Yeah.
Especially if we have no particular plan for it. Do it.
Yeah, I haven't been gonna be on the back, but I think you'll see something in twenty twenty happening on it, you know, but I, I don't think we'll see something through the end of the year. Unless somebody comes up to us and gives us a great offer.
Is there an unbiased way to value that property? Because I know it's, there was a lot of discussion about this before about its actual value.
The, the, the most, most unbiased way to value property is to list it for sale and advertise it to everybody, which we did, and see how much you get an offer for. That's the best way to find out. We did that.
All right, fair enough.
Okay, Rainey?
Regarding the batch property, Tasha told me in September, because I called her about the weeds, whom I talked, Mr. King and Ron, uh, October twenty-first. And she told me they were putting the banners back up on the fence, don't worry. I said, the banners are a cover up. The place looks a disgrace. What are you gonna do? And she said, the property, wheel, construction will start September thirtieth. I have a witness for this.
Well, they had a ground, they had a groundbreaking, I know that. I don't know where they're at right now. Uh, if the.
So where we have with the batch property?
It is ask a question where they're at.
I'm not really privy to get that information.
No, okay.
You can go and ask her, the owner, you know, get a.
Did you ask her about the weeds?
Yeah, I talked to her about the weeds.
And what she said was, what are they doing?
I guess, well, the contractor who.
You have something?
Who put this way? There was another party that wanted to become partners, which also said it was in terms.
Right.
For the better. And so he just went and the contractor said that he didn't want anyone on that cutting weeds and that because if he used the weed whacker, if anyone ever used weed whacker, rocks in that fly all over the place. And he, he did not feel it was safe for someone to go on there and do one of them.
So we're just gonna let the weeds and everything stay as it is in the course until they get, all the masks. I'm just saying, if any of you lived across the street from me, I don't think you'd be happy with that either.
Well, like I said, they, they have plans for starting a project, but maybe these, another entity says, hey, we want partners. So now they had to go back, redo all the plans, have a third party look at the plans again. And that was for the contractor. They didn't want no one doing on there. The mayor and myself were on there when they had that groundbreaking. The mayor and myself were on there when they had that groundbreaking. The one area was in pretty bad shape. The one they, the contractor said, I don't want anyone going on there because it's a liability issue.
At this time, it's winter, the weeds are dying. Let's kind of look, see where they're at in the spring, you know. Hopefully they'll move on here.
And I'll, I'll just throw this out, because if I do, I have, I thought, I don't want to think this, but I'm going to put it out there in the open.
Give this item for consideration?
The batch property idea, God forbid, if the batch property needs more land and we have a borough building sitting here, because we were given the Woolly Center and this, I hope to God nobody thinks we should just give this property to the batch and then that'll take care of that, they can re-land and blah blah. I'm only throwing it out in the public.
All right, thank you. Okay, item of consideration. Only items of consideration.
Sorry?
Yes, for your.
Okay. All right, motion to approve resolution 2019 dash five, Metcalf House Vacant Property Recovery Program, Parcel 181 dash B oh twenty-eight.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stein, second by Councilman Engels, all in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Motion to approve resolution 2019 dash six, Metcalf House Vacant Property Recovery Program, Parcel 181 dash B zero thirty-one.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Ballas, second by Councilman Tashawn, all in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Motion to approve ordinance 1598, an ordinance establishing requirements for registration of mortgage foreclosures, vacant and rental properties, establishing maintenance requirements and penalties for violation in addition to the ProChamps agreement.
Motion.
Sir? Motion by Councilman Stein, second by Councilman Engels.
Once, this is over, Kell, but we always have a public hearing. Everyone's already had a chance to ask about this. Is there any other new question? Sorry to delay the meeting on this ordinance. Anyone have any other questions or comments before council votes on this new ordinance? Okay, thank you so much, Becky. Who's the public hearing?
We have most of our best hearing. Second. My favorite one tonight. Okay, all in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Motion to approve ordinance 1599, an ordinance of.
We did, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, I'm sorry. Got too many lines going on on this page.
Take more off.
Motion to, thank you. Motion to approve a handicap sign for 607 East 19th Avenue is approved by Sergeant Williams and Chief Kim.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilman Truzey, second by Mr. Ballas, all in favor, somebody saying aye.
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 Chief, chief, how many more before the end of the year?
Probably have four more applications for next month already.
Is this?
I checked with all the neighboring towns, they get a handful a year. We get a handful a week.
Is this because we are a healthy community or?
No.
A healthy community or whatever, so how much.
We have a lot, we have a lot more signs that you, ask about how many signs you need to, you know, pass to pay for every year.
I guess we do have a lot, obviously, we not have, you know, drab, these are the other. Okay, that motion's on the floor. Do we have most of that?
Yeah.
We have the proof.
Motion to approve the October 16, 2019 minutes.
Motion by Councilman Tashawn, second.